of you to to make your way back out of the room. Uh, we. Um, I'm sorry, but we can't, we can't, we can't start this meeting. With so many of you in the room and we can, we can, you know, if, if you want to be heard, we've got people speaking uh on your behalf. That is fine. We, we want to have the public here and that's why we are, you know, we can have people out in the, the lobby, but uh we can't start this meeting right now um because of, of those concerns. All right, that's fine. Um, but this, this is the constraints we're working in at the moment and we're unable to start the meeting, sorry, as it is. Thank you. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much, uh, everyone for that. Um, and apologies again for, for not being able to accommodate you all in, in the room with us. Um, hopefully, uh, the people outside of have, uh, been able to get up on their live streams so they can share in this. Um, I'd just like to say a good morning to everyone, um, and welcome to the council meeting of Monday, the twenty sixth of August, twenty twenty four. In terms of health and safety, if the alarm sounds, uh, please make your way to the emergency, uh, nearest emergency exit. Uh, the assembly point, uh, point is across the road, uh, from the Bay of Plenty Regional Council building over there. Uh, please be aware that this meeting is being livestreamed and the video will be publicly available on YouTube, um, and hopefully, uh, uh, out in the lobby as well as, as members, uh, enjoy, um, the meeting. Um, members, could you please remember to speak clearly into your microphone and only one speaker at a time? And, uh, please, can we turn off mobile phones or, or put them on silent? Uh, I'd like to start, uh, with a karakia. Oh, sorry. Yep. Um. Got it? We'll just, uh, we'll just pause for, for a minute or so, just so, um, people can get up online. We don't want them to, uh, miss, miss out. And just for, uh, clarity again, it's, uh, if you go to the Tauranga, uh, City Council website, uh, meetings and agendas, um, you'll be able to find the, the link there. All right. We'd like to start with a opening karakia and can we, uh, please ask, uh, councillor Baker to start us off? Thank you.
Um.
Thank you, uh, councillor Baker. Um, I have a, an apology from councillor McCarthy Sydney, who has been granted a leave of absence. Are there any other apologies? Thank you. I now call for a mover. For that, uh, thank you councillor Schuler and a seconder. Thank you councillor Morris. Um, moved, uh, by councillor, uh, Schuler, uh, seconded by councillor Morris. Um, and I'm, I, uh, move that apologies for councillor McCarthy Sydney, who has been granted a leave of absence, be received and accepted. All those in favour, aye? Those against, no? That motion is carried. Thank you. Um, obviously what most of you are here for is, uh, to listen, um, to the speakers and we start off, uh, around the topic of, of fluoridation of, of Tauranga City Council water supply. Um, we have three speakers today, uh, in Robert Coe, uh, Dr. Alana Ratna and, uh, Jodie Brunning. Um, could they please come forward? We've got some, uh, seats there. Uh, you'll each have, uh, five minutes, uh, to speak, uh, and we'll allow a little bit of time for questions if, if there are any from the councillors, uh, once you've spoken. I believe Robert Coe is, uh, is starting us off. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mahi. Um, it's great to see you taking interest in health and safety as everyone else here is, um, too. Now, I'd like to, um, speak to this report that's being presented to council. Now, um, there's a few things in it that trouble me, but what troubles me even more is what isn't in this report. But let's start by what is in it. Now, there's a lot of talk in it regarding large fines for our council and also, um, basically the reclaiming of, of funding that's come from central governments if the council fails to follow the directive. Now, it was two months ago that a ruling was made in the Wellington High Court regarding this by, um, I emailed all councillors last week and three of you were polite enough to acknowledge it and your staff are just doing half. Thank you to those. Um, yeah, so basically it says that there's no intention by the Director General of Health to take anyone to court. I mean, that comes from his own lawyer. So anyway, and now on the subject of, well, reclaiming funding in the report here, Article thirty one says about Tauranga being successful in that passion of funding, blah, blah, blah. Capital cost is going to be covered up to three point four three million and the projected cost is three point four million. So there's a bit of change there. However, if we go to Article fifty five and financial considerations, it says here, council has invoiced the Ministry of Health for the first milestone payment of just under two point seven five million dollars and payment is expected at the end of August, two thousand twenty four. So, yeah, it's right here in the report. So basically, um, there's no funding to repay. Council have just dug themselves three million dollars into a hole and is now hoping that based upon a lick and a promise from the ministry that they're going to pay the bill. Well, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, you guys can put a stop to this madness today as a former council. As a former council did regarding the Harrington Street car park building and now the fiscal hole for that project was six times what has been spent on fluoridation. In fact, it's much more than that. But anyway, let's move on. Let's talk about health and safety now, shall we? And speaking of legal obligations and health and safety, um, we need to consult with the Health and Safety at Work Act two thousand and fifteen. And now as councillors, for the purposes of that act, you're all officers of Tauranga City Council. Now, officers have certain obligations under this act and one is a duty of care. To be specific, the act states that a duty imposed on a person under this act requires the person to eliminate, eliminate risks to health and safety so far as is reasonably practicable and if it's not practicable to eliminate, to minimise the risks. So what are the risks of fluoridation? Well, let's be clear about what's actually being proposed here. The chemical involved in fluoridation is a substance known as hydrofluorosilic acid and I've got this information from council staff. I have the material safety data sheet in front of me and well, to summarise, it's really not good stuff at all. It's highly caustic. Get it in your eyes. You could be immediately blinded permanently. Get it on your skin. It burns you, blah, blah, blah. And well, I tell you what, if you have even a teaspoon of it in your stomach, well, guess what? You're in for a really bad day if you're lucky. So the other, um, property that this, um, substance has is that when it comes into contact with any silicon containing materials such as glass or, well, perhaps the concrete floor of a water treatment plant, it emits a gas which is called sodium, oh, sorry, silicon tetrafluoride. And, um, this is highly toxic and fatal upon inhalation. So there's a very clearly established risk to the health and safety of council staff. Now, what about the general public though? Okay, so if, if, um, this substance is allegedly safe and effective as long as it's at the, um, recommended dosage of, what's it, one part per million, I think. However, what if everything goes wrong? And well, here I have an article from the Washington Post, November twenty ninth, nineteen seventy nine. The state medical examiner in Maryland ruled yesterday that an overdose of fluoride pumped into the Annapolis Water Supply more than two weeks ago contributed to the death of a sixty five year old man whose blood was being filtered through an artificial kidney machine. Now, what this article doesn't tell you is that there are actually eight patients hooked up to dialysis machines in that hospital that morning and two of them died. But one of them was resuscitated and all of them became violently ill within an hour of starting dialysis. I have the CDC report right here if anyone's interested in reading it. But let's move on. I've only got five minutes. This from the Anchorage Daily News from Alaska. This is from September twenty second, nineteen ninety two. Paper bay, Dominic Smith didn't realise that the water from the village well was killing him, so he kept drinking. The sicker he got, the more he drank, the more he drank, the sicker he got. A system that pumps fluoride solution to the town's drinking water barely malfunctioned, poisoning a large portion of the population. Fluoridine levels at least forty times what the federal government considers safe for deterring tooth decay were measured in drinking water. Over two hundred people became ill. One died and several had to be airlifted to hospital. Could it happen here, you wonder? Surely not. That was a long time ago. Well, have I got news for all of you. It did happen.
Sorry, Robert, your, uh, timer's up.
It did, it did. It did happen. I'm almost finished, Mr. Drysdale. It did happen in Wellington in two thousand and twenty one. Wellington Water had to dump a whole reservoir of water because there was too much fluoride in it and it was unsafe for human consumption and this was due to malfunctioning dosing equipment. Now, the subsequent investigation revealed that the dosing equipment had been malfunctioning for over four years. Wellington Water knew about it, but they'd never done anything because they thought it wasn't a risk simply because they'd only ever underdosed the water prior to the event. Fortunately, it didn't go into public circulation. Anyway, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Alana Ratna.
Thanks, Mahi. Fluoride is the new lead. In nineteen seventy two, countries around the world recognised that lead is a neurotoxin and began to remove it from petrol and paint. The New Zealand government did not ban lead until nineteen ninety six. We waited twenty four years to do the right thing. We now have a definitive report that proves that lead is a neuro, that fluoride is a neurotoxin equivalent or worse in danger to lead. And at the same time, we have our government forcing us to add fluoride to our drinking water. Let us act now and not wait twenty four years to stop fluoridation. Let us not knowingly harm another generation of children. The report to which I'm referring was conducted by the US National Toxicology Program and was released this month, last Thursday. It is an eight-year-long systematic, multi-peer-reviewed study that looks at countries all over the world comparing the intelligence of children in fluoridated areas to that of children in non-fluoridated areas. The overall conclusion is that fluoride exposure is consistently associated with lower IQ in children, an average decrease of seven IQ points. In New Zealand, a seven-point decrease in average IQ would result in sixty thousand more individuals with intellectual disability in a population of five million. The authors reported that eighteen out of nineteen high-quality studies showed an inverse association strongly between estimated fluoride exposure and IQ in children. This means the higher the fluoride intake from all sources, the lower the IQ. The findings are strong, being consistent across diverse populations and found by different research teams from various leading public health institutions in five countries. This report provides strong evidence that water fluoridation at the New Zealand level of naught point seven to one milligram per litre is likely to be lowering the IQ of at least some children. The report also reviewed studies looking at the effects on brain, brain development other than IQ loss. The results were concerning. Eight of nine high-quality studies examining other cognitive or neurodevelopmental outcomes, e.g. ADHD, showed higher incidence in fluoridated areas, stronger for boys than girls. A twenty twenty four study in the Jama found in fluoridated Los Angeles, the children of mothers with higher fluoride exposures during pregnancy had double the odds of several neurodevelopmental problems compared to mothers with low fluoride exposure. That study was funded by the National Institute of Health and the US Environmental Protection Agency. It's the tenth consecutive NIH-funded study in humans finding adverse effects of fluoride on children's developing brains. Babies formula fed with fluoridated water received two hundred and twelve times more fluoride than babies who are breastfed. Breast milk filters out fluoride. A twenty twenty Canadian study that looked at fluoride exposure from infants formula-fed found that those babies had an average nine-point decrease in IQ. Water in Canada is fluoridated to the same level as planned in Tauranga. Are you going to do that to our children? Teeth even benefit from fluoridated water. The Cochrane Collaborative Review of twenty fifteen is a review of all studies on fluoridation and dental decay up to twenty fifteen and was the review used by the New Zealand Ministry of Health to promote fluoridation. However, it finds no modern reliable evidence that fluoridation reduces dental decay. I wonder if the Ministry of Health even read it. The New Zealand School Dental Statistics, the most robust set of data we have on dental health in New Zealand. The latest Ministry of Health set shows no significant decrease in decay rates between fluoridated and non-fluoridated areas. Many other studies in the UK and US also show no reduction in decay and I should email these to you and the councillors. So whilst there is some evidence that topical flu application of fluoride might confer some protection to teeth, there is no evidence that fluoridating water has any beneficial effect on teeth at all. In contrast, there's a lot of evidence that drinking fluoridated water can actually harm the teeth. Fluoride accumulation in the dentine of the teeth, the tissue that supports enamel, causes teeth to weaken. Too much fluoride can cause dental fluorosis, which in its extreme form can result in crumbling brittle teeth. Forty-two percent of children in fluoridated areas in America have some degree of dental fluorosis. Fluoride is also linked to arthritis, bone cancer, pituitary and pineal gland diseases, low sperm counts and premature puberty in girls. Proponents will often imply that fluoridating the water is a common practice. It's not. Most countries do not fluoridate their water. Ninety-seven percent of the European population is not fluoridated, e.g. Germany and Sweden. Yet tooth decay rates in European twelve-year-olds have declined as rapidly over the past sixty years in non-fluoridated countries as in fluoridated. Let us remember the precautionary principle. If there are risks and there is a safer way of achieving a better outcome, then the safer approach should be taken. This approach should be dental hygiene and good dietary habits. In summary, the government has passed an unlawful directive forcing councils to add what is undeniably a toxic, toxic substance to our drinking water. It is not okay to use the excuse of just following government orders. It is not okay to just follow orders to poison our children. Mayor Drysdale, many councils around New Zealand are hesitant to fluoridate their water supplies but are too scared to say no to the government. You know that the government fines for not fluoridating are not enforceable. You know that fluoride is toxic to the brain. You are an outstanding New Zealander, held in high respect throughout this country. Be the mayor who has the courage and the conscience. Be the mayor who has the courage and the conscience to protect the children of today and of tomorrow, including your grandchildren you will one day have and your sister's children that she might have more of. Stand up and say no to fluoride. The other councils will follow. They are, they are just waiting for a leader. That leader is you. We believe in you. Do it.
Thank you. Uh, Jodie Brunning. You got a presentation, I think.
Yes, thank you. And there's a PowerPoint? On its way. How, um, may I say how appropriate and wonderful it is to be speaking to elected representatives again? But since I spoke last, uh, I'm a trustee and lead researcher for Physicians and Scientists for Global Responsibility. Since I spoke to many of you last in council chambers, I have a master's, uh, sociology master's research. My research looked at the experiences of scientists attempting to get funding to research environmental chemicals as drivers of human health in, with particularly in regards to, um, endocrine disruption. And, uh, so the reason you don't get scientists presenting to you is because the funding pathways are not there. Um, so first of all, we would like to sort of simply, the, the context is, is the Director General misleading officials? Does the Health Act nineteen fifty six, section one one six now contradict other relevant legislation required to be considered by you as a territorial authority so as to protect health? And can you pause capital works without financial penalty? Next, please. So is it appropriate that New Zealand's gold standard for the safety of fluoride is established by a politically timed review from the Office of the Prime Minister, Chief Science Advisor? So risk assessment is not a departure from the science, but it's being true to science. And next, please. So if we see here, we see the Office of the Prime Minister's, um, Chief Science Advisor, the OPM CSA, most of the peer reviewers were already, um, focused on oral and dental health. When the, uh, Office of, uh, next one, please. So the review was particularly, politically timed one day after supplementary order paper thirty eight was released by the Prime Minister's Office. As in twenty fourteen with Peter Gluckmann's, the twenty twenty one paper had no methodology, peer review panel, and the peer review panel was exclusively with oral and dental health. No endocrinologists, toxicologists or impartial epidemiologists were involved. Uh, the Cochrane Study twenty fifteen for fluorosis, they did not look at any other potential risk. So no risk assessment has ever been held. Next, please. So is it appropriate that risk assessment to judge pre-existing exposures in infants and children and risk from fluoride dosed into water by developmental stage and body weight has not occurred in New Zealand? Next, please. So this is, uh, Joseph on constitutional administrative law, obedience to convention. It is a convention that risk assessment will occur for hazardous, hazardous substances for medicines. It is a convention that they will go through peer-reviewed, um, trials that are overseen for safety and efficacy. Next, please. So if we look at the Select Committee consultations, what we find is that the public have been written out of any capacity to critique the Ministry of Health's advice, uh, uh, um, declaration that fluoride should be in water. So in twenty sixteen, seventeen and twenty twenty one, both of them stated that we are, we are not listening to any of the public discussing risk because it's not within the subject matter that we're talking about here, the content of the bill. So there has been no capacity for the public to come back with these concerns. Next, please. So it, beyond the subject matter of the bill, uh, peer reviewers were oral and dental health experts, not impartial toxicologists. If we talk specifically about under eight-year-olds, because this is, um, the, the group that are most at risk, they consume more by body weight and they retain more fluoride in their bones. And in fact, children will retain up to eighty percent of their fluoride intake in their bones while adults will retain far less. Uh, next, please. So as we see the science showing IQ harm is not going away, this NTP group did another review, just a quick review and found that the consistently updated literature search will show continued harm. Next, please. Does the Ministry of Health and the Director General, section one one six undermine the Local Government Act two thousand and two? Next, please. So what you see is you must identify and assess any other public health risk. So what's really interesting is that you have to improve, promote and protect public health. Now, you can make bylaws for the, specifically for this purpose. And I think if I'm not incorrect here, that section one five three says the Crown is bound by any bylaw. If non-compliance with that bylaw by the Crown would be likely to have an adverse effect on public safety. You may make law bylaws for the, um, for the particular reason for, um, protecting public health. Next, please. Does the Ministry of Health and the DG, section one one six undermine the Water Services Act? Next, please. So what you have here is one line. It says other causes together with the consumption or use of fluoride water. So of, of drinking water, sorry. So you've heard Dr. Alana's, um, comment on, uh, on, uh, infant formula. So what we have is an understanding that children in New Zealand already have higher levels of fluoride in their, um, urine than adults. And please note down there, the maximum acceptable value in the WHO is a nineteen eighty four study. If you go back through the drinking water guidelines, you will find that they have not reviewed the scientific literature. It's been locked in. Next, please. So we see here that you have, uh, rules and if we look at the bottom right, bottom right, we've received nine eleven notifications from local for, um, notifications that exceed determinant levels. Um, next, please. So your challenge, so, so navigating uncertainty is values-based. So the margin of error is do cumulative exposures exceed one point five? Now, exceeding Mavs is common. Children have toothpaste. That's not being taken into account, the exposures from toothpaste. We also know from the CPHR report that young children have higher urinary levels of fluoride. Next, please. So the, you, you, you are required to value protect and enhance the environment. Fluoride has never, or hydrofluorosilic acid has never, ever been risk assessed by the EPA. They had never, ever looked at fluoride and HFA emissions to water from Wellington or Auckland or Dunedin. Um, there's no consents required. There's no fluoride assessed in the ESR's groundwater survey. Uh, and the margin of safety for children for, uh, for example, pesticides is normally tenfold. So we should not be seeing a dismissal of a margin of safety for small children, but that's because risk assessment hasn't hurt. So the gaps are ridiculous. Next, please. So you, the, the section one one six does not grant permission to put HFA in the municipal water and that's what you're putting in. Now, the evidence bar for the Director General is that scientific evidence reducing prevalence and severity of tooth decay. If any one of you know children with terrible teeth and particularly from low socio-economic backgrounds, they will have seven, they might have seven, they might have nine. So what we see is all that Director General has to prove is maybe they've reduced their, uh, dental decay by two. Then what we also see, next, please, is that there is absolutely no requirement for, no legal obligation for the Director General to conduct risk assessment to assess safety. The, the section one one six is terribly, terribly drafted. Next, please. So the court judge. So the court judgments, the courts have not tweaked, the judges have not realised that not undergoing risk assessment is outside administrative convention and that safety is not drafted into the legit, the legislation. So decisions must be reached justly and fairly and seem to be so. Next, please. Because what would a fair-minded lay observer say? So we're wondering, are there manifold inconsistencies and absurdities here? Next, please.
Sorry, can we wrap up?
Yeah. So there is a duty to warn, you have a duty to warn. This is from Joseph. This is the public law Bible for New Zealand. Next, please. Risk assessment is not a departure from the science, but it's being true to science. Next, please. So this is the questions we have. The Director General has made clear he will not press for Hastings Council to conform to the fluoridation order. They are under until future legal issues are resolved. So we request that TCC set up a process to further review the issues and options. You should be able to be, be compensed for the money you've spent with the full knowledge that there is now an elected council that can actually make their own independent and impartial decisions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for addressing the council. I'll just open it up if, if any of the councillors have any questions to, to any of our presenters. Councillor Morris, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Rob, thanks for your email the other day, which you referenced the judicial review proceedings which are underway. There was a judicial conference on the ninth of August. Have you got any updates to, any information that's come out of that conference?
I've sought information on that from others and I haven't heard anything regarding that. I'm guessing perhaps the judge reserved his decision. But I'm guessing, does anyone else, anyone here know about that? No, no one knows. So yeah, sorry, I can't answer that for you, Steve.
Do, any other questions from councillors? All right, thank you very much. The council will be considering the item 11.1 on fluoridation of Taonga City's water supply shortly. And you're welcome to stay and listen to this item as, as the council talk about that. Obviously, if, if you do want to stay, we just ask for some respect, please, around allowing us to, to discuss that. I'd now thank you for, for your attendance. I'd now like to call our next public forum participant in Jan Genge. And she's going to talk about my stance on no democracy, no rates. So I welcome Jan and you have up to five minutes to speak. Thank you. When you're ready, if you just push the, the button on the microphone, you'll get the green. Thank you.
Good morning, your worship. Deputy Mayor, councillors, Mr Grenfell, staff and members of the public. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning. My name is Jan Genga and I live in Bethlehem. I'm delighted and simultaneously relieved that democracy has been restored here in Taonga. Congratulations to you all for being elected as our representatives. And I'm sincere and trusting that you will throughout your appointment uphold democracy and democratic processes as required under the Local Government Act 2002 for us all here in Taonga. I will refer to the LGA 2002 as the act. I made a stand back in 2022 when what I considered to be reprehensible behaviour and actions of the commissioners and the council became untenable. I stopped paying main rates. No democracy, no rates. Residents and rate payers at large here in Taonga were not consulted with, as of right, by the commissioners and council. Only specific individuals and select groups were consulted with. Stakeholders, they were called. Democracy is the cornerstone of the act. Democratic processes are included that need to be observed and there are strict consultation guidelines. Your organisation has started legal action against me. The only thing that I'm guilty of is standing up for democracy. This has only ever been about my demand for democracy under the act and not for any financial gain for myself. In taking this stance, I'm standing beside all residents and rate payers in the Taonga community. Above no one. This is the right thing to do. No democracy, no rates. Commissioners and council were required to abide by the act. There is not time here now to cover all the breaches that they made under the act, but I would like to highlight the following. The fact that the commissioners made recommendations to Minister Mahuta in November 2021 with regards to an extension of the commission term and a delay of our next local government election without any public consultation occurring. This move was unconscionable. Breach of the act here was instrumental in our 2022 election being delayed until 2024. The democracy in its entirety under the act was denied. The entire civic precinct consultation process in 2022, including but not limited to the following. Insufficient information provided, how the written and verbal submissions were received, and the accuracy of the summary of the consultative process that was released to the media. The commissioner's attempt in late 2023 to change our voting system for the 2024 election without public consultation. The long-term plan of the years 2024 to 2034. There is a lot to look at here too, including the consultation process, the legitimacy of it, whether all effects were provided, whether the long-term plan is what residents and rate payers actually want and can afford. The legitimacy of it being pushed through prior to our election last month. My stance and actions were purposeful in requiring the commissioners and council to abide by the act. But they were met with resistance and stonewalling. I want to acknowledge all the many individuals and groups that have also worked extremely hard to hold the previous administration to account. No democracy, no rates. I'm formally asking you today to write off my rate arrears, penalties, fees and costs and stop any legal action against me. My commitment is to pay the equivalent amount of the actual rates arrears to charity here in Taonga. Your decision on this will send a clear signal to the residents and rate payers of Taonga on what you consider to as appropriate practice for yourselves as required under the act. With democracy restored, I will be paying the next rates instalment due before the end of this month. Where there is democracy, there is transparency, accountability and integrity.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I ask again, is, is there any questions from councillors that you'd like to ask? Yes, councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you, Jan. And just a quick comment, they're representing, who referred to, there was actually public consultation issues that it was ignored. Just a minor, minor difference. I'm interested in whether you can sort of articulate how the council can get over the dilemma, which is whatever we think of your stance, I guess the issues you commented on are some that I have personally addressed over those years the commission was here. And so I have a lot of empathy towards your view. How do we get over the issue of setting a precedent that others could also argue on moral or ethical grounds that they don't want to pay their rates?
I think the position here is about what is right. It's right and wrong. That is the underlying fact here about what happened and how our rights were taken away from us and continually denied. I'm standing by rate payers and residents and that, and the fact that the amount of money, equivalent amount of money that people have paid in rates, I'm going to pay my equivalent amount to charity. And so I, I just feel that it's the right thing to do. And I stand by the very closing statement of that you're sending a clear signal about how you are going to treat your oath to abide by the act. Or are you just going to hold over here, rates have to be collected and over here, we can please ourselves?
Any further? Yes, councillor Cora.
Thank you, Jan. Is there any ability for you to compromise in that quantum? You want the total rates arrears and any penalties to be waived and you would donate that to charity. But is, is there somewhere in terms of a compromise offer that you could entertain? In terms of, because you need to pay the rates. I mean, we, we all affirm on that because we can't allow a situation where people don't pay their rates.
I think, I think the situation here is that the breaches under the, under the act have been extreme. And I have, it's nearly more than two and a half years now that I have had this stance. And council itself is in the belief that they can collect the rights and carry on acting how they're acting in the administration. So there's no precedent that has yet been set within the court system about the act being breached and continuing right to collect rates.
Yep. So have you had advice in respect of a court accepting your claim? Likelihood of that happening?
Yeah, is, is no guarantee. There was, legal action was looked at by a, a largest group and many residents and rate payers were behind that. And while there was a case, there was no absolute guarantee that the case would stick. And there was no money to pay for the, for the case. So I stance, and I will if I have to, go to court to stand up for democracy and the requirement of an administration to abide by the, the act as they are required to do.
In terms of you, you're fairly confident a court would accept hearing your claim to actually allow it into the court? Because a judge would actually have, to have a look at it. And if there's no basis for a hearing then, so you confident that that would happen?
I'm, I'm not in a position to make a judgment about that, councillor Cora. But the stance is right.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jan. I, I guess probably more a comment than a, than a question. You know, I, I think we are empathetic to you and, and your, your stance. But at the end of the day, rates are the fundamental basis of, of council. It's how we pay for all facilities, amenities and services that the, the council make. We would obviously prefer not to go down a legal route. But we have to enforce, you know, rates being paid. And, you know, that's, that's, I, I guess where we're sitting right now. And, you know, we're, we're always happy to talk to you. You know, legal proceedings will be ceased immediately upon the rates being paid. And, you know, that's, that's where we're, we're at at the moment. But if you have a principle to, to make, then obviously, you know, that's, that's your right under the, the judicial system. So thank you very much for your, your time. Our, our final speaker is Peter Burke from Howraki Express Limited on the ferry proposal. He's coming in via Zoom, so we'll hopefully have him. Welcome, Peter. You have five minutes to talk. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me as well?
Oh, yes, we can. And sorry, this is Amy Burke as well, so.
I was, I was able to make the call. So, so yeah, I'm going to go through this and then Pete's here to help with any questions. So yeah, I'm Amy and this is my father, Peter, from Howraki Express. We're here to talk for Taonga Moana. So we're either seeing our proposal or are aware of our concept. It is different from recommendations made by previous studies. It uses a fleet of small class and nimble ferries that can get into shallow places. It doesn't require a different, additional onshore infrastructure or lengthy consents. It is more suited to Taonga than large ferries proposed in the aforementioned studies. And it's ready to go. So we're aware of the time limits today. So we're just going to go through and say why we think ferries are a great idea for Taonga Moana. It is well known that Taonga has made transport challenges, talked about by Rapid Grove, being the largest port and tourist geography. Taonga is a city surrounded by a beautiful and interesting harbour, but this is not conducive to an efficient, an efficient roading layout. Put simply, for traffic planning, the harbour just kept in the way. Taonga is totally reliant on hard asphalt roads for both private and public transport. And yet it has this beautiful harbour with sheltered water, inlets and channels to many points to be planned. The harbour should be looked at as an opportunity, not an obstacle. It is very unusual that Taonga does not use the harbour for transport purposes. Thank Auckland, Sydney, Vancouver, even Wellington, Queenstown and Christchurch have ferries, as well as Brisbane using its river. And they all use their water as a transport means and for the use of the entire community. Taonga should take advantage of our blue hot highway. It's already there. It doesn't need to be built. It's free and it doesn't get potholes. We know that Taonga has looked at the potential for ferries in previous studies and has drawn a conclusion that they don't stack up financially. But as mentioned, ours is different and the numbers work, which we can provide in a lot more detail to you. Or Pete, the numbers man can speak to any questions after I've, I've gone through the rest of this. The initial ferry service will provide a safe and enjoyable connection between the urban centres of the city and the mount, a link between footpaths and cycleways where they touch the harbour's edge. It will be a service for commuters, day trippers, tourists, school students, everyone. The expansion of the service will provide an alternative to the tortured Oma Koroa Taonga route. And there's also the opportunity to connect. And there's also the opportunity to connect Mangatafu, Otumotai and many other points on the harbour's edge with the city and the mount. And we're proposing a public-private partnership where entrepreneurial spirit, existing public infrastructure and public administration combine to make and achieve a unique transport service that Toorong can enjoy, be very proud of and help Toorong catch up on the road to net zero carbon emissions. So we're saying, let's embrace the beautiful Toorong and Moana and make Toorong a true harbour city, not just a port city. And we can send some notes and our proposal through to everyone who may not have it post this call. So thank you for listening to us today. And are there any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Amy. Yeah, we, we as a council have, have your proposal, so thank you. But I'll ask if there's any questions from, from the councillors. Sorry, deputy mayor, Schola.
Thank you, Mayor Mahi, and thank you, Amy and Peter. I like your comments about making Toorong a true harbour city. We definitely are needing to look at alternatives to roading across Toorong. We definitely need to find solutions for the congestion that our people are facing every day. I guess the, the question, the, the, it's really positive that is, it is, you are putting yourselves as part of the solution and your own business. Can you just explain a little bit about the, the relationship on your contribution to this? And what you would like to see coming from the councils from a financial perspective?
All right, yeah, well, I'll, I'll jump in and answer that one. Our, our proposal is that we build, we build two purpose-built ferries. And we pay for those ourselves, we own them and we commit them to the Toorong, Mount Manganui route. The, the, the initial, the proposal is to have an initial two-year trial period where both parties can, that's ourselves and council can see how it goes. And if it is, is a success, we would hope that both parties would, would approach this trial with great enthusiasm and really try and get the community to respond to this alternative means of transport. And through that period, like all public transport, it, it, it doesn't pay its way. The, the fare, fares collected at the, on the boat don't cover the costs. And the proposal that we've put forward is that council, and it's the combination of TCC and Bay of Plenty Regional Council, contribute to the shortfall in fares for the two-year period. If it doesn't work after two years, we just part company and that's the end of it. But we would, we're very confident, given that there's a desperate need for an alternative me, means of transport in Toorong, that it will succeed and go on and expand and really sort of become a feature of, of Toorong and the harbour.
Thank you. So councillor Taylor.
Good morning, Amy and Peter. Just a quick question and it's not really tending to the detail. It's probably more, how do you feel about the fact that you've already had a decision from this council and you're back here again? It's a bit like grand hog day, I presume?
Well, we, we know what's going on in Toorong, that there was, there was a commission and then it went back to an elected council. And that's just the facts of the matter. And so we're, we're, we're prepared to accept that, that we have to refresh the proposal to the new council.
Thank you.
Are we, any further?
If I've got it, if I can have a, a couple more minutes of your time. We've, we've talked about all the good things about, about, about our proposal and what, what it can bring to Toorong. But if I stand back and just, just look at the overall picture, especially with transport in, in Toorong, it's, the statistics, the, the status quo is not great. 1.8% of Toorong commuters use public transport compared to national average of 4.2. So it's, it's way behind on that count. 5% of Toorong commuters use active travel compared to 7.2% being the national average. So it's behind again in that. More than 90% of Toorong, of, of trips around Toorong are by single occupant vehicles compared to the national average of 67%. So Toorong suffers from severe congestion and that's, that's, I think we all know that. And it's, it's been stated by media that it's the worst in the country. New Zealand's got a plan to achieve net zero carbon emissions by 2050 for Toorong. This includes to reduce the transport emissions by 41% between 2019, 2035. And to double the public transport and active travel from 2024, that's today, to 2030. Now, that's, those are pretty ambitious goals. But what's happening is that 88% of the 10-year transport budget is committed to road development. That means that 12% is targeting public transport and active travel. So it's, it's a small percentage. Is Toorong going to change transport behaviour by that sort of budget when 88% just goes to road travel? And it really must. Toorong must give travellers a, a reason to not just jump in the car. It's got to take pressure off the transport system. We're, we're saying that the blue highway is one of the solutions. Toorong is so fortunate to have the harbour with sheltered waters and inlets and channels to many points of the city plan. Right now, the harbour just gets in the way, that's what we said before. And I think that's a good catch cry for, for transport in Toorong. Toorong needs to embrace the Toorong and Moana and make Toorong a harbour city, not a, not a port city. Toorong should be the ideal city in New Zealand for active travel and a healthy lifestyle. The weather is fantastic, it's relatively flat and the people are sporty. So you just wonder, why is it lagging behind the rest of the country in active travel? What, what our, what our ferry service offers is an alternative transport option. A safe and enjoyable connection between, between the urban centres and that's the first stage. And if you think of the rather brutal route from Mount Manganui across Toorong and trying to negotiate that on a bicycle or, or on foot, it's, it's pretty tough. And that's going to be a construction zone for the next few years. We just, we, we feel passionately that this, that ferries in Toorong is, is, is part of the future. It's got to start, it, it, there's, there's an end date of 2050 on zero emissions. A, a fundamental part of achieving that is to get people out of their cars, not have 90% of travel around Toorong by sole occupants in their cars. They just get in their car and go. We've got, got to make a transport behavioural change. And you can say, well, it will happen. And we've heard this from, from people in, in authority in Toorong. They say, oh, it'll happen, but not right now, we don't know when. Well, actually, 2050 is not moving out to allow that, that amount of comfort. Toorong is already behind in its, in its drive towards zero emission. It's got to catch up, it's got to make that shift now. We're here, we're ready to go. It's not a, it's, it's, I'll, I'll start that again. We're here, we're ready to go. The commission has already said, yes, it's a good idea, they've analysed it. The, the offices within council have, are, in, in our view, are very enthusiastic about it. We really ask this council to, to embrace it and not just go, and not put it off and not continue to rely on hard asphalt as a medium for public transport or for all transport in Toorong. Let's get out on the water. That's what I like to say. And I don't think I can express it more from my heart than I have just now.
All right, thank you very much. We've, we've got to move on, but thank you very much for your time and presentations today.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
All right, now we, we move on to, to the meeting and acceptance of late items. There are no late items of business. There is one supplementary item included in the supplementary agenda that was circulated on Wednesday, the 21st of August in publicly excluded business on the Western Bay and Bay of Plenty subregional city deal. Confidential business to be transferred into the open? Is there any confidential business to be transferred from publicly excluded to open? No? Change to the order of business? Is there any change to the order of business? Okay, we have no confirmation of minutes. And a declaration of conflicts of interest? Has anyone got any conflicts of interest?
Mahi, I'd like to declare that I am being currently considered, but I have not been offered and have not accepted a governance role for the Environment Protection Agency. I have not seen any of their work and I'm declaring that interest, I don't believe there is a conflict.
Thank you. Jan, I'll declare a conflict in one of the publicly excluded items, which we will deal with in publicly excluded. Deputations, presentations and petitions, there are none. And recommendations from other committees, there are none. So now I'd like to move into the, the business. And our first order of business is fluoridation of Toorong city's water supply. Nick Johansson, general manager of infrastructure and Peter Bear's manager of water services will be, will be speaking to the report. So I invite them to speak to that, please.
Tato, mayor, deputy mayor, councillors and members of the public. The purpose of the report is to provide elected members with the background information regarding the director general of health direction to fluoridate the Toorong water supply by the 30th of November 24. And secondly, to seek approval to complete further work investigating approaches for the provision of a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose to use that. We have three options in the paper. One is to seek an extension of the deadline. One is to ignore the direction by the director general of health. And the third one is to continue the existing work to fluoridate. Which in, in the report from staff is the recommended option, as we see that as the...
Excuse me, can we, can we just have some quiet, please? Thank you.
As we see that as the only way to meet the regulatory requirements for water supply and under Tomata Arawai, the regulatory authority in place for looking after the, the water services across the country. We have many of those regulatory requirements and this is another one of those. And we could give you a rundown of the content of the paper or if you're happy to take it as read, we could go into questions. And I've got, as you said, Peter, Peter Bars here, who's the manager of water services to help answer any questions.
Thank you, I think we can take it as read, but happy to, to answer any questions for, for Nick or, or Peter? Is there any questions? Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Through you to staff, I note recommendation B, that fluoride will begin to be added to Toorong's water supply by mid-September. Has any fluoride been added to Toorong's water supply at this time in the run-up to September?
I don't know. At this time, definitely we've had no addition of fluoride to the water.
Councillor Corrath?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. So in terms of deferring it and applying for an extension, what is the likelihood of that being granted?
I, I guess item 47 in the paper addresses that specifically. I'll just quote it for, for the benefit of the discussion. Ministry of Health provided council with the following quote from Director General of Health. Directions to fluoridate, fluoridate remain valid as confirmed by the High Court in 16th of February relief decision and was again confirmed in a recent decision of the High Court 24 May 24. That being so, we will not be granting extensions because of perceived legal uncertainty as the legal position is clear. So that was recently obtained from Ministry of Health.
Subsequent question, so if this council didn't support the recommendations, this organisation would be operating outside the law or unlawfully?
Correct.
I, I just have a question just around timing. So as I understand, we, the directive has us fluoridating our water fully by the 30th of November. And to apply with that, we must fluoridate for a minimum of 30 days prior to that. So what would be the, the final date that we could start testing in order to comply with, with that? Like, is it, is it the first of, of November we just start? Or do we, is there testing we have to do prior?
We, we know from, from projects that things don't go smoothly from day one. The rationale for this is that we've avoided putting fluoride in the water as long as we can. We do at some point need to commission the, the respective plants with fluoride as a test substance. And then go into ensuring that everything is working. So ironing out any teething issues that might occur, that we are ready on the first of November for continuous fluoridation.
So is there a timeframe of how long that may take?
Well, that's what we've, we've indicated, late, late September was where we were planning to do commission testing just to, to ensure that individual plants were operating correctly. And then from there, towards mid, late October to start dosing to ensure that we iron out any teething issues.
Right, thank you. Is there any further, councillor Schola?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Just in terms of, we heard some reasonably strong arguments and case law this morning from New Zealand and overseas. I, can we take it that, that sort of information has already been included before you did your recommendations? And can I ask, have hearing that today changed the view that you put on the recommendation that we received last week?
The, the recommendation is based on the Director General Health directive to include. That is... That is, that...
Thank you. Sorry, keep going, Nick. Uh, excuse me.
So from a, from a staff perspective, we've, we've been leaning on, on the Health Ministry's, uh, links that we, we have been providing and, and that's been provided to yourselves as well as the sort of background information. And, um, I guess it's not, it's not our position to go in and, and bat for one or the other in terms of the, um, the, the health benefits or otherwise, but actually follow the directive.
Excuse me.
So, so from an organisational or staff perspective, that, that's, that's, that's what we're obliged to do at this point and not, not go into that argument about the, the health benefits or otherwise.
Uh, councillor Kure.
Hey, Mayor Mahi. Um, Nick.
Excuse, excuse me, can we just have quiet as we will have to ask people to leave? Thank you.
Are, are you fairly confident that you find a, a reasonably practical solution in terms of supplying un-fluoridated water, um, that's accessible to the wider public?
Yes, we are. Um, it, it, it will come within a cost band though, and, and that's where we have uncertainty at the moment, so we...
Rate payables.
Yes, that's right. That, that's right. Yep, yep.
If, have we got any other questions? Um, yeah, councillor Schola?
Um, I'm going to direct this to, um, Marty as CEO. There was questions raised about the need to look after the health and safety of, uh, employees, your staff. Are you confident that you are able to meet the health and safety of your staff if they are administrate, administering fluoride into the water?
Yes, I am.
All right, have we got any other questions? Any other questions? Uh, sorry, um, we've, we're out of the public forum. Uh, no, there was, well, there was two speakers and they, they had their, their five minutes. Oh, had it timed, thank you. Um, you can, you can communicate with the councillors by email if you have, uh, questions. Um, is there any other questions for the staff? Okay, we'll, um, we'll move on and thank you staff, uh, for your time and, and answering those questions. Um, now, uh, I, I guess is, is the time that we, uh, need to, to, uh, move a motion. Um, and I'm wondering if, uh, if anyone has, has a motion to move. Uh, councillor Kure.
Um, I'll move the recommendation on A, B, C and D. Um, on, shall I speak to that? I'll get a seconder? Need a seconder to speak to it?
Um, let me, let me just, uh, so, uh, what, uh, what councillor Kurak has, has moved is that we received the report fluoridation of Taonga City's, uh, water supply. Uh, notes that fluoride will begin to be added to Taonga, Taonga's, uh, water supply by mid-September with full fluoridation of the water supply by the end of October to allow for compliance with the direction from the Director General of Health and the conditions of the funding agreement with the Ministry of Health. Authorises staff to complete further investigation of options to provide a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. So... Ex, excuse me, um, that we're, we're now in council business and, uh... I'm, I'm sorry, we, we will ask people to leave. We want to conduct this in public, but we need, we need the respect. Thank you. So that, that is, has been moved.
Recommendation D?
Oh, and D is, um, notes that staff will return to council with a report in December twenty twenty-four, outlining options for a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. This report will provide information on costs, risks and feasibility. So that has been moved. Have we got a seconder for that motion? Excuse me. Um, have we got a seconder for that motion? Councillor Baker has seconded that. Um, I would now, uh, ask if councillor Kurak would like to talk to the motion?
Hey, Mayor Mahi, and, um, thank you for everybody that spoke today and the supporters. Um, but my position is, uh, to basically follow what's recommended, recommended to us by the government. Um, I don't...
Excuse me.
Um, I don't like the fact that this organisation would be behaving or acting unlawfully. Should we not pass this resolution? Um, I think, I think any beef needs to be directed to central government. We're here, we're creatures of, um, central government. We're here at their pleasure. Um, so, and, and so in my view, you know, we do have strong indisputable...
Please, please allow councillor Kurak to speak.
There is strong and indisputable, although the people here might dispute it, evidence of, of strong health benefits to, um, our, our children in terms of their oral health. And, well, you know, we, we, we have, we have a large number of people, you know, pushing your case here. You've got obviously the means, both financial and, and, and other ability, uh, and, you know, your resource to come and present to us. But what about those, um, people that aren't resourced sufficiently? We haven't heard from them. There's, no...
Excuse me, excuse me. Um, we're, we're discussing this around the council table. Your, no, you're, you're, I'm sorry, your behaviour is disrupting the meeting. And... No, I, I, I understand that. We, we have heard from, from the people this morning and as part of, we have got, we have got one, we've got one person, uh, that is, is giving his view. And the other councillors will all have the opportunity to give their views, uh, which may be different. And I just ask that you please listen to that debate and we will get to a, a place. And if you disagree with that, we are in a democracy, uh, you, you can, you can, uh, give your views, um, but not, not right now as, as part of this meeting. Thank you. Yeah. We're, I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're in formal debate and we have heard a lot of, a lot of your, uh, arguments and, and all of us have received that and we will talk to that. But please give councillor Kurak the respect to, uh, to give his views. That's... Um, councillor Kure. Uh, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Mahi, because potentially my views might be shared with the majority of the council. Um, please respect my, uh, opinion. So we, we haven't heard, uh, there's been no right of reply to what's being claimed here, um, via the, the, the people that do represent the, the government side of the, of this issue. Um, so we have got information that we have, uh, read. And, uh, in balance, I would feel for those who, uh, those children that are disadvantaged and probably not represented here. As I said, those people are probably haven't got the means, financial or whatever, to come to present to us or not willing to come because, you know, they probably have a lower degree of care for their children. So we're responsible for those children. So, so that's why I am moving this today and, and also strongly on the basis that we need to, um, act lawfully. And please go to your MP, present to the government if you want that change. Um, because we, as I said, are creatures of central government. We haven't got that ability.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will have to adjourn the meeting shortly if, if, uh, you know, we, we don't have the respect to be able to, to debate, uh, the, the issues. Um, I now ask councillor Baker whether he would like to talk, uh, as a seconder or whether he'd like to reserve, uh, his, his coram for later.
Okay, to buy, uh, I seconded so we can move the discussion to debate. Uh, my biggest probably concern around the, or one of the concerns I have, um, is that the, the idea of choice, that the notion of choice has been taken away from the community and it sucks that, um, the decision, we haven't had time as a council or councils across the country, um, to really seek insight from community. Um, but however, this is the predicament that we are in as a council here and now. Um, I guess my concern is we've, we've recently heard this morning around no rates, no democracy. And yet we, it, you know, the, the idea is that rates need to be paid. Um, are we contradicting our quote-unquote enforcement of, um, paying rates if we refuse to not pay the supposed fine and subsequent fines? Should we choose not to fluoridate? Um, and then I guess my conflict there is that, that responsibility for those fines then falls on our rate payers. Cost of living is already so high. Is that a risk that we are prepared to take should we choose to un-fluoridate, uh, our water? Sorry. That's kind of where my thinking is at the moment. Um, and I would probably look to support seeking an extension, um, to wait for court proceedings and things like that, to give us a bit more time and to consult with our community. Um, because we hear quite strongly from those that disagree but haven't had an opportunity to canvass the wider Taonga, which might be a, may or may not be a valuable exercise, um, open for debate, agreement, disagreement. Tenaka to.
Thank you councillor Baker. Uh, councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi, and councillor Kurak certainly does have a bit of courage raising a, a motion like that in, in this environment. Uh, however, I do speak against the motion on the table, uh, as written because, uh, when we look at the judicial conference, which was supposed to happen on the ninth of August, uh, I've consulted with member of the community, Rob over there, that judicial conference was cancelled and we have no, uh, reason as to why that was cancelled. If we look at, uh, paragraph forty-seven of the report, it talks about the Director General of Health saying that, uh, there will be no granting of extensions because of legal uncertainty. That's in relation to a High Court decision on the twenty-fourth of May. Uh, so we have further, um, progress in those proceedings. And I think it would be appropriate, uh, for the council to wait to hear, uh, what that progress is before embarking on decisions. So for that reason, I disagree with the motion on the table. I think that we need to, um, give the judicial review process time, uh, to, to, to run. And particularly because there, uh, was progress in terms of the judicial conference on the view that, um, perhaps the Director General's advice to councils was not appropriate. So I think we need to allow the judiciary to, uh, do its job and, uh, wait for that. Uh, on the wider issue, personally, um, I, I don't have an issue with fluoride, uh, for me, uh, or for my children. Uh, but that's a my body, my choice kind of argument. Um, and that's my personal view and, um, I, so that, that's something I accept personally. However, I, I think that over the last few years, uh, we've had folks in this country who, um, have had, uh, medical directions imposed on them. And I do, I do want to acknowledge that because I know the hurt that that has caused. Um, I know that that has affected, uh, some folks' employment situations on moral grounds. And so I do want to acknowledge that and recognise that and the feeling, uh, that's in that and that may also be around this decision. So I do want to acknowledge that. Uh, personally, I'm from a place where I'm happy to accept it and ingest it, just like I'm happy to, uh, ingest alcohol, uh, as well, which is a, a carcinogen, but that's another matter. But that's my body. Uh, and I think that in regard to the public at large, there is definitely a feeling, uh, from a number of people in the community, uh, that they've, they feel disenfranchised. They feel that they haven't been heard. So I do want to acknowledge that. Um, and, uh, look forward, uh, to another, uh, resolution being on the table, uh, if this one fails. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Roseboom.
Uh, thank you, Mia. Um, and thank you to the three speakers this morning. I, um, fully understand and I'm, am greatly aware of all that scientific work. What I haven't heard this morning is our Bill of Rights, our right to choose what we do with our body. Um, that aside, there are three options available to us this morning. My personal view is option three. The issue I have with option three is it doesn't allow the robust debate in the community of what we've heard this morning. The debate in their press is too one-sided. Obviously, our Ministry of Health has a quite one-sided approach to this debate. We need to put what we've heard this morning into the public arena. So for the purposes of this debate, option two would allow us to seek extension to the deadline of November the thirtieth until the judicial review process is completed. So we can continue this debate and make sure it gets into the public arena. Everything that was heard this morning needs to be in the mainstream press tomorrow morning so the wider public can read it and follow it. And allow the democratic process to take its course. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you to the speakers and for all of you for turning out. Um, yeah, just reiterating, um, councillor Roseboom's, um, comments in terms of the distinction between the Bill of Rights issues and the scientific issues. We had some interesting presentations and I've also read a number of papers around the science of it. The judgment last November, and I'll just read from it, said that the, uh, scientific evidence on the effectiveness of adding fluoride is not the same as the judgment required under section five of the Bill of Rights Act. So that, um, you know, and, and the judge went on to say there isn't, in my view, no, getting away from the fact that Director General did not turn his mind to the Bill of Rights Act. So, so that's the sort of substantive issue that I think you just heard the previous councillor address. To me, a crucial piece in all this is the, um, consideration that was stated by the lawyer for the Director General of Health, which was mentioned earlier, but it was in the June twenty-fourth judicial review, which said there is no indication that the DG would take enforcement action in relation to the directions. And the judge used that argument as the reason why he wasn't, um, wasn't, uh, granting the interim orders that were requested. So in other words, if, if you can't rely on that judgment, presumably the judge couldn't rely on what the Director General was saying. So my view is also to go with option two. We know that the, based on what has happened with other councils, that, um, you know, it may be a temporary reprieve, that we might be seeking an extension. It may or may not be granted, but I think that would also allow time for the public debate to continue. And it would also allow it to come back to council again before any fluoride is added. I think that's, that's, um, the issue that I think we're, we're dealing with here is that there is, as, as councillor Morris said, we're waiting on a judicial process. It's not due to be fully, um, ending until middle of next year. And my view is we should try the best we can to extend that and to as close to that time as possible.
Uh, thank you councillor Crowther. Um, have we got any other, uh, councillor Schola?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi, and thanks, um, to everyone for here today. And it's, um, obviously we're here seeing some passion, um, from this group. Uh, just in, in line with councillor Morris, personally, I, I am happy to have fluoride in my own body, like my choice. Um, people that I talk to, uh, also, um, would like to see fluoride. I suppose, looking at the other angle from the people that are the frontline workers, so to speak, are the dentists, um, that are there caring for the health of our dental, the dental health of our, our children and our, and, and all members of society, um, that they really would like to see this as the feedback I've had from people that I know. Um, but I do, um, yeah, I, yes, I understand that, but I do support, uh, there is a broader aspect here that is happening and, uh, the ability to have a bit more time, um, to reflect and to hear more of both sides of the story, to make the best... to make the best decision for the city, I'd support too. Thank you.
Councillor Tyler.
Yeah, once more, thank you very much for coming. It's great to see democracy in action again. I'm not going to offer an opinion on the actual fluoride issue itself. A couple of questions I do have though. One is around the supply of the alternative water supply. I think December, if this thing goes ahead, it's probably too late. It'd be good to see if we can bring that forward to coincide with applying fluoride to the general supply. So that would be something I'd ask the staff to have a look at, see if that can be brought forward. And then as a general thought, I do agree with a couple of the councillors that have said option two probably gives us a little bit of leeway with making this decision as far as council goes. So I would probably be in favour of option two coming forward.
So I'd just like to clarify what option two is, is people have been talking about it, which is seeks an extension to the deadline of thirtieth of November twenty twenty four until after the judicial review process is complete in twenty twenty five. So just, just for clarity. And yeah, I will just add my thoughts. I think it's pretty well known, my, my personal opinion on fluoride and that is that we should have a choice. And personally, I don't support the water being fluoridated. That, that is my, my personal opinion because I do believe that we have options if, if you want fluoride, that you can, you can have that yourself. In saying that, we, we do, you know, we do represent our, our whole community and the people of Tauranga. So, you know, I think there is an issue here that, that there is some significant fines, whether they're going to be enforced or not. We, we have to be cognizant that they may be. And we're looking, if, if we don't get the money for our capital costs plus the fines on the table, we're looking at over seven million dollars in the first year and about three point eight million from, from then on. We also are in a position where there is a possibility that, that we will be offered a city deal. And when, when we think about those things, that could have huge ramifications about going against the government. So we, we are, we are sort of need to be cognizant as, as good governors that we're making the, the best, you know, decisions for the city. So I guess in, in light of the, the recommendations, I would like to, I guess amend this motion. And I would, I might, might just have a minute to pause. And I think the, yeah, I think we'll, we'll just see how we can add this. So I think it's around that B where we, we seek an attention, we seek the extension and, and have some, some more time and, and agree not to fluoridate until after we, we have heard back around that or the, or the process. So let's just pause, we'll, we'll get that wording right and then we can talk to, to the amendment.
Seats. We are now just going to go to Deputy Mayor Schooler to talk and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor Mahay. There's a couple of things that have, I would like to talk through. The first is the, I think it's really important that we do seek clarification on whether there will be fines if we don't comply with the directive. I also think that it's important that we do know the results of the judicial review in terms of before a decision is made.
All right. Thank you, councillor Schooler. So therefore, I'm taking that, that you've got a new motion. And what we'll first do is we'll just deal with a substantive motion we've got ahead of us and we'll see how.
We can show both motions.
Okay.
Councillors know what's there.
All right. So yeah, we'll just put up both motions before I allow councillor Kurak to any right of reply.
No, in terms of expediting matters, I'll just wait and speak to the next motion.
Okay. So that is the current one in front of us? This is a foreshadowed motion, so that the council receives the report fluoridation of Tauranga City's water supply, requests of the Director General of Health, a further extension to defer fluoridation of Tauranga's water supply until such time as the judicial review court process on this matter is completed. Assurance that Tauranga City Council will not be subject to financial penalty should it not proceed to fluoridate the water until such time as a judicial review court process is completed and the consequence is understood. Does not proceed with fluoridation of the water supply until the completion of the judicial review court processes, regardless of whether the extension in B1 is granted. If the Director General of Health does not provide assurance re-financial penalty requested in B2 above, that the matter be reported back to council for further decision. If following the judicial review process councillors are required to fluoridate, then Tauranga's water supply will be fluoridated. Authorizes staff to complete further investigation of options to provide a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. Notes that staff will return to council with a report in December 2024 outlining options for a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. This report will provide information on costs and who pays those costs, risks and feasibility. So we'll go back to the substantive motion, which everyone has had an opportunity to talk to. And now that the debate on this is finished, obviously I've asked councillor Kurak whether he wishes to have his right of reply, which he has refused. So I now put the motion as listed there to the council. And that is, I'd like to now say all those in favour, aye. Those against, no, no. That motion is lost. So now we will, yeah, call for a mover and second of the motion, so.
So I move that second motion, Mayor Mahay.
Okay, I'll second that. Would you like to talk to it councillor Schooler?
I believe it sets out the best solution for us at this time and I would seek support for it.
Okay, I'll reserve my right to talk as a second. Have we got any debate or comments around the table councillor Taylor?
Just making my same point again. I think we want to try and have that alternate supply ready to go if we are called to do it earlier than December. So if the council staff can expedite that report, that would be helpful.
Councillor Taylor? Is there anyone else that would like to talk? Councillor Roseboam?
Yes, the motion, it clarifies, I'm more comfortable with that motion. I would like us as council to do more around comms, so the people understand what's actually happening here, get this as a wider community discussion around fluoride into the press, the papers we have, we can do it. It needs to be a community-based decision. There's obviously a lot of voice from the public here today. With their demo, I want to be sure to myself that they represent the majority view of the Tauranga residents of. Thank you.
Councillor Kurak?
Just say I do support the amendments or the new resolutions. It's a sensible way forward to wait for the outcome of the judicial review and I'm optimistic that the result would be a fluoridated supply, but with options for people that can't accept that and it gives them, as Steve Morris said, my body, my choice, gives them an option to actually achieve that. So as I said before, my focus is on those disadvantaged children and that's where it firmly sits. And we haven't really heard from them today. So, but thank you for everyone's input.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. So I think, you know, for me, what this does is it asks the Director General to reconsider in light of the court cases. And obviously, we don't wish to subject our residents to fines. So we're obviously asking on that point as well. You know, I think what I can, I guess, ask the people that are against fluoridation to do is to make your points heard to the Director General, because ultimately, this is a decision that they're making. And, you know, the, I guess, the reasoning that they are putting these directives is they want to take the power out of our hands to make these decisions. And, you know, which in some ways makes sense in the fact that they should be better qualified than us to consider health advice. But whether that is actually the case or not is, I'll leave it to the people to decide. But, you know, I think that would very much be the best place to put your, I guess, views to. So hopefully that the Director General potentially may step or back down from this directive. I think, you know, we are very cognizant as a new council around our ratepayers and getting value for money. And that's very much, you know, we don't want to have big fines. And also, you know, we're very much wanting to work with this government going forward. So we have to also be cognizant of that because, you know, we as a council have a lot to do. And I'm very supportive of working with the people that can help us do that. So that's very much, I guess, you know, where this is coming from. And hopefully, we, you know, we get that choice when the Director General comes back to us. So I'd like to ask councillor Schooler if there's no other questions to talk if she wants to.
I think yes. Thank you, Mayor Mahay. I think you've summed it up well. I am comfortable with the motion on the table and I would seek the support of the council.
Okay. In that case, I'll put the motion to the council that receives the report fluoridation of Tauranga City's water supply, requests of the Director of General of Health, a further extension to defer fluoridation of Tauranga's water supply until such time as a judicial review court process on this matter is completed. Assurance that Tauranga City Council will not be subject to financial penalty should it not proceed to fluoridate the water until such time as a judicial review court process is completed and the consequence is understood. Does not proceed with fluoridation of the water supply until the completion of a judicial review court process, regardless of whether the extension in B1 is granted. If the Director General of Health does not provide assurance re-financial penalty requested in B2 above, that the matter be reported back to council for further decision. If following the judicial review process councils are required to fluoridate, then Tauranga water supply will be fluoridated. Authorizes staff to complete further investigation of options to provide a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. Notes that staff will return to council with a report in December 2024, or hopefully earlier, as councillor Taylor has asked, outlining options for a non-fluoridated water supply for those who choose it. This report will provide information on costs and who pays those costs, risks and feasibility. I therefore ask all those in favour to aye. Those against, no. That motion is carried. Thank you very much. We have obviously now completed the fluoridation discussion. You're all welcome to stay if you wish. But if you do want to leave now, we can give you a minute or two to move. And thank you for your participation and coming out today. All right. Thank you, everyone. Now, we're moving on to our next item of business, which is boat ramp parking fees. Yeah. So we'll just wait. We've got a few more people coming into the room, so we'll... All right. Thank you. So we'll start with Barbara Dempsey, General Manager, Community Services, and Ross Hudson, Manager of Strategic Planning and Partnership Spaces and Places. They'll be speaking to the report. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, and thank you for the opportunity. So boat ramp fees. So through that long-term plan process, council suggested a range of new fees and changed fees with the aim of recognising user benefit and finding the mix between user pays and the wider general ratepayer contributions. As outlined in Ross's report, the feedback through that process was pretty close to 50%, supporting and not supporting boat ramp fees. When we considered how we collect those fees for using the boat ramp, we recommended that the trailer parking was the best method rather than a barrier arm as that slows down the conversations we've had with other councils. That just slows down and makes it less efficient for boaties. We've had almost 1,400 users pay fees and staff have been monitoring the feedback from those people. And the feedback we've received forms part of Ross's report and the recommendations. So investigating implementing charges and compliance of boat ramp fees goes across several teams of council. And while Ross has pulled together this report, they're represented from each of the teams here to answer any questions. So if it's acceptable to you, your worship, I suggest we take the report as read and respond to questions.
Thank you. Yes, we'll take that as read. And have we got any questions councillor Kurak?
Thank you. There has been additional information distributed to members. I was just wondering if that could be tabled, just for information. And also, just a question, probably a lot of people that are watching this or the audience probably don't know the matter of if we drop this boat ramp charge, how much would it cost to the average residential property? I'm trying to add the rates per year.
Through the chair, a high level estimate would be $3.50 per ratepayer per year. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, thank you. The direct cost for repairs and maintenance, that's ranged from 32,000 to 88,000 in roughly round numbers from what I see in the extra material per year over the past decade. So just a portion of what's been allocated to this cost centre. I'm wondering, when I look at roughly, very roughly, sort of half of that is for sand removal at Pilot Bay. So I'm just trying to get my head around, does the impact of dredging at the port have an impact on that? I'm aware from Tanga Rararua that the impacts have had significant, and, you know, there's been significant impacts on Matakana and in other locations because of the port dredging. I'm wanting to find out if there's been collaboration with Biopanee Regional Council to ascertain if that cost is exacerbated by the port.
No, we haven't had that discussion with Regional Council to see whether it's been exacerbated. I know that dredging forms part of an entrance and ensures that a boat ramp is more usable. So it is a cost for that activity. The physical, the physical part of the boat ramp, it's not a direct cost to that physical component.
Just to follow up through the chair, it just seemed sort of be striking that it was only at Pilot Bay and not at the other ramps. And just, it did show that something happened there, obviously. And I'm not aware of all the currents and how it all works. But the other question I had was of the overall marine facilities funding of about three million per year, if I got that number right, of which this is just a portion of it. What, so my understanding is she took a percentage of the total cost centre and then said allocate that towards the boat ramps? So what else is covered in that marine facilities cost centre?
So I'll just go back to your comment about the environment. You're right. I mean, if you wanted the answer to the question, we'd need to bring somebody with some more knowledge about the east-west flows of currents and how that affects the sand and the need to drench at this location and not in other locations. So I can't give you that detail. I'm hoping Paul can answer the question about the wider marine budget that's not specifically allocated here.
So it's anything not specifically allocated. So that would be staff costs, it would be general overhead across the organisation, those sort of costs, anything that can't be specifically allocated into that boat ramp cost centre. It's 10% effectively. It's included in it.
Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor Mahay. Just through you to the chief executive, just confirming that that Excel spreadsheet is able to be tabled.
I don't see any reason why not. Right. Councillor Kurak?
Another question. We did have a petition. Was that petitioner advised on this meeting? Was there any sort of consultation with the petitioner?
Sorry, I didn't. Sorry, can you just repeat your question?
The petitioner, Mr. Whatever his name was, sorry, I can't find it. Was he advised of this meeting occurring today? Or has there been any communication with that petitioner?
That would be something that is handled through Cole's team and I'm sure she can give you a response there.
Yes, we emailed Mr. Harrington and advised him and sent him a link to the agenda.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for staff? Councillor Taylor?
Sorry, just seeing the recommendations, a couple of other customary fishing rights and community service cardholders getting discounted rates. How would you actually police that or enforce that?
Through the chair? So the customary fishing rights, there are two ways in which we would look to do it. One would be, there's a mechanism that Ministry of Primary Industries has where they have a relationship with local kaityaki. And essentially, the kaityaki then administer those customary rights passes for MPI. So we would look to link into that mechanism. Essentially, those kaityaki would pass us the relevant information. We could also do that directly with Marai and Hapu as well. The customer service cardholders. So the way that that would work would be when somebody applies for the annual pass fee, they would have to let us know and provide evidence of there being a customer, a community service cardholder.
A question. So, you know, we're sort of talking about potentially opening that up to, you know, the, sorry, the annual passes to everyone. How, what's the saving there? Can now that be on the app? You can go and pay my park and do it annually, et cetera?
Yes, you can do it through the app, notwithstanding those individual circumstances where a little bit of additional administration would be required. And the community service cardholder is one of those. Yeah, it also means that we don't have to check people's residency. So there's an administrative saving, small administrative saving associated with that.
And how's that process working at the moment? Is it... Is it, I've heard sort of it takes quite a while for people checking that their residence, et cetera?
You're correct. When we introduced it, it was a new process and so there was quite a bit of going between frame between the staff and the applicants. There are some situations where the applicants don't have all of the information, so again, a bit backwards and forwards. But from talking to my team as recently as a week ago, that's kind of smoothed out and the process seems to be running reasonably well. I'm sure there'll be some people that disagree, but on a whole, the process seems to be working very well and there's certainly a lot less feedback about the rights or wrongs of charging.
Councillor Baker?
Councillor Mahi, a question. With the exemption for community cardholders often, what's the word? Are there extensions are given to gold card users as well? Was there a reason why we excluded them or did we consider that? Because they often come hand in hand with things.
We didn't give particular attention to that, though you could have, you wanted to.
Then I guess is there an easy system, for example, where we could give a discount to ratepayers, considering, or is that have to go through the same system as it is now where you have to apply?
The original concept was to focus on our ratepayers by giving them a, the discount of the bulk fee of the $200 and only related to our ratepayers and anybody else paid the $20. I guess the feedback we've received, it would be far better if we could offer the annual pass to everybody. We could have a portion, we could have it cheaper for ratepayers or we could have it the same for everybody.
If it was cheaper, how like administratively, how easy is that?
Well, it's going through the same process that we have now. So it's like every new process, it's a little bit difficult to start off with, but it seems to have smoothed out quite well. Get Ross to check that.
Yeah, councillor Taylor?
Sorry, if I can just have one more. The thing's been operating now for a few months. When they initially proposed it, especially in Pilot Bay, there was discussion about trailers being parked, the length of Pilot Bay, has that eventuated and is that causing other parking issues in the area?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. I mean, Reece can chip in, he's our parking manager, but I think the short answer is there's a degree of that happening and what we're proposing is that we continue to monitor that and see whether additional measures would be required in due course.
Yeah, that's completely correct. So that problem of vehicles with trailers parking down Pilot Key is quite common, that's existed even before paid parking existed. We expected an initial period of people purposely parking down the road quite early in the morning, especially to avoid the fees to begin with, and then we're going to monitor it over time. We don't want to come in and completely change the rules for an area until we know what the actual impact's going to be initially. It's starting to slow down a little bit, but it is also a slow time of year.
Okay, thank you. That's Reece Wilkinson, Parking Manager, just for those unaware. Yeah, councillor Taylor?
Sorry, what sort of timeframe do you think?
For it to start either for us to know for certain, that can be up to everybody here. I'd suspect we would start to have a pretty clear idea as the weather starts to improve throughout October towards the end of the month.
Sorry, the reason I'm asking the question is just, obviously we've put this in place, is it causing us other issues around the town is what I'm sort of getting at, other than the financial costs of all this thing? Is it a stress point for people? And I believe we should be looking at that as part of the equation.
Councillor Coret?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Coret, foreshadow a, an alternative resolution that I've distributed to members after our discussion.
Yep.
Or question time?
Yep.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? I guess just on the parking issue, is there sort of thought around, I guess, extending the area around these boat ramps to fix some of those issues of people parking on Berms and Pilot Bay, et cetera?
Yes, I think you would have seen in the report that there is a budget in our LTP to look at that whole area and to make improvements. So certainly having somewhere for people to park, a bigger parking area is part of those plans, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Sculler?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Just a question on the, are you getting, you've already received, collected quite a lot of the fees, are you getting resistance? I know people don't like paying things, but they also know that those facilities are provided for them and they are bringing a boat in. Are you getting resistance? Are you finding that people haven't paid or in general are people paying for the services they're using?
There's obviously a degree of non-compliance. Some people are parking their trailers and not paying, other people are avoiding paying the fee by parking in the vicinity. But I think the advice we've had from the enforcement team is that it's generally pretty good.
And just to add to that, like any new initiative along these lines that we implement, Sarah and her team always take an education approach first. So while there has been some parking tickets issued, it's usually an extreme position or situation or warrant of fitnesses, but mostly we've been just, you know, advertising, communicating with those people and at a time, we, you know, just need to ramp that up a little bit.
Just a supplementary, so you would say at the moment it's working?
I think given the newness and the fact that we implemented something without having the infrastructure as good as we could have had, it's as working as well as we could possibly hope for, yes.
All right. Sorry, you can, you can email us if you have some more information. Is there any other questions? Is there anyone, no other questions? All right, I would like to thank the staff for that. And I would allow Rick, who has foreshadowed a motion, if he would like to talk to that.
Corr, would you please just turn it up on the screen?
We don't want any more interjections, please, so we will have to ask people to leave if we're going to be disrupted. Okay, well, you can do it in, you know, the right way and you will have to, you will have to leave the meeting if you're not going to do it, as I'm asking, thank you very much.
Can I also ask, as the mover of alternative motion here, if you can bear with us, and here we are, it's up on the screen, so if we look at the bottom of the screen, it's Resolution E. So leave the report, sit on the table until it considers the matters in the context of a user fee review that takes into account the disparity that exists between recreational activities for adult users and in the meantime, turn off the parking machines at boat ramps and not accept annual pass purchases.
So we've got a second for that motion? Councillor Crowther? So that motion is now before us, would you like to speak to it, councillor Coret?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. My three direct neighbours and myself own boats. All my friends, you know, my key friends own boats. This is something that they do for their recreational pursuit, it's great for their mental health, et cetera. And, you know, and talking to them, I'm hearing exactly the same as the gentleman there that was a bit rude but spoke out and said that, the same message about, oh, there's so many other recreational, you know, facilities that the ratepayers pay a lot of money towards and they collect no user fees for those activities. So that's where they're a bit bitter, is why pick on the people that want to use water as their recreation? And I agree, as someone said, you know, it's a basic right, I think the infrastructure required is very minimal really, considering some of those other facilities. And it's interesting when you go through and read the, some of the comments that were made during the consultation around the boat ramp charges. And those in support of the boat ramp charges said, residents that don't use boat ramps should not pay for those that do. So, you know, a statement there. But many in that camp, you know, who had that view, were probably likely to be recreational users of the library service. Okay, so we've heard that the boat ramp fee, if we dropped it, is going to be, going to save $3.50 and it collects around 50%. So the total cost to the ratepayer would be like $7. Yet when we look at the libraries, they're free apart from the hot titles and new releases. So you get that service basically for free unless you want those hot titles. The library service costs around, I haven't got the information, but I looked and I could basically be fairly comfortable, was it costing Paul around 15 million? It's around 15 million, could be more. And I found that there are 40,000 active library card users, but that's over a two-year period, 40,000. So you wonder why did they choose a two-year period to establish how many regular library card users there are? So I'm picking that 40,000, probably dropped to about 30,000, but we'll look at the 40,000. If 40,000 active library card users was the number, then if we divide that 15 million by 45,000, sorry, 40,000 active library card users, that means the ratepayer is subsidising every library user by $375. This is not $7 for boat ramps, this is $375, but it gets worth. So last week, last Monday, this council approved a project, another step in the project that will result in the total when we look at the civic centre project, once the museum is finished, once the library is finished, the civic body and there's a waterfront and, you know, and the art gallery, there's some additions to, alterations to that, that the community, the ratepayer will be charged every year around $900 for that one civic centre facility there, once it's all operational, opening, you know, the art gallery, the library, the museum, $900. No user fees as far as I understand, apart from the library with the hot titles. I'm sure the museum is going to be free, correct me if I'm wrong, and of course we know the art gallery is free. So that's why my friends and my neighbours feel bitter, because why should that be? It's blatantly unfair. Why target a small section of the community for such a pathetic amount of money? So, okay. And so if we look at that disparity and where potentially this will end, you know, will potentially the council be looking at, you know, if they keep with this boat ramp charge, that, you know, people will complain and the council will be in a pressured situation to say, well, to make it fair, shall we charge library users, shall we charge art gallery users, shall we charge for recreational facilities like Patmai Hills, Clans Falls, Moa, boardwalks, et cetera, et cetera? There's a huge list of services and places where people can go for the recreation and that's great for mental health. As I said, Paul, people use their boats and go fishing for mental health. You know, you can't, you can't treat one activity different to another. If one chooses this activity for mental health or their wellbeing, they should not be separated from another person, rather read a book or go to the art gallery. So that's why this Resolution E that you see up there is to let this lie on the table, but stop charging the fee, look at the disparity that exists out there and let's apply it fairly. That's what all my friends and neighbours want, is just a bit of fairness in this, and that's why we see some passion from the speaker there, sir. Because to me, it's not fair. So all I ask, for this to be put on hold, let's have a discussion about where this council sits in terms of, you know, applying some fair regime around our recreational facilities. So I ask my members to support it, please. Yes, thank you, sir. Please, please.
Councillor, thank you, councillor Coret, councillor Crowther?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Yes, I support this amendment. I guess for me, you know, I don't have, I don't have a boat, I don't have neighbours with boats. I do know a number of people, of course, we all know people with boats, but it was a big election issue for me. A number of, you know, many, many people in the hundreds have talked to me about this issue. And I think the overarching thing is it goes back to what the commissioners did in terms of their user pays model that they were, that they were trying to drive through. I think it was deeply flawed in terms of their consultation, they had massive pushback from many sectors of our community. My observation is that many people with boats didn't even know that the consultation had been undertaken and that when they did find out, they felt it was a fait accompli. So I'm sure that they and potentially many others would be happy to re-engage around that issue of user pays, because what happened, you know, effectively was that the commissioners pulled back on a number of other community charges, user pays charges, when the feedback came from well-organised parts of our community. So I think there are other issues too, and I did hear the rather noisy interjector saying about business, but I mean, that is something that I was going to address, that it isn't just about recreation, it isn't just about mental health or, you know, other types of activities that people pursue, but it is, there is a business issue here. And I guess I'm more in the space that we have plans, it seems in the long-term plan, to invest more into the infrastructure related to supporting the use of boat ramps. And I think I would rather we do that first and then charge to the extent that we are now, not the other way around, where we say we need to take more of the money from people who are not currently getting a great service by all reports and to then sort of say pay upfront and then we promise we'll give you something, because I'm not convinced with our long-term plan that we have a sustainable, a financially sustainable plan. So I think we're going to have to be making some hard decisions about what we do and don't invest in. So I would prefer to actually take a breath, have a look at the principles behind this. I will also comment in terms of, a number of people have raised, on both sides of the equation, have raised the issue of that it is people, you know, polluting because they're using boats which, you know, have petrol and diesel. But I'd like to point out, in case people aren't aware, that not only do they pay an ETS levy on the fuel, which is to compensate in theory for the carbon emissions and so forth, but they also pay 70 cents per litre of petrol excise for any petrol that they use in their boats or jet skis or whatever they're using, if it uses petrol. So that's actually typically, if you go to Motiti, it might be 20, 25 bucks, something like that, to get out there and back, that you're actually paying to central government for improving our roads. So it's not as though these people are not contributing to society. So it's not as though these people are not contributing to society by actually going out with, with powerboats. Um, of course, people on yachts and things, it's a bit different, but, um, but it's, it's that, that, um, that argument I don't think holds water in terms of the overall contribution. Now, we have a role as a council to sort of look at how we charge for things, but I think the big picture needs to be taken into account that these people are often in a position of, of struggling to pay, um, on a, on a twenty dollar a week. I'd be more open to if it was something like Toowoa has, which is six dollars. Um, you know, that would be something I think a lot of people would be, I can tell and we can, we can consult on that, but I, my view of this is not a sustainable position. Per launch, so per, per day, I meant to say per day, did I say per week? Per day. They say it's a twenty-four hour period.
Uh, thank you councillor Crowther. Um, twenty-five dollars to uh Motiti Island, I might want your boat.
Um, ju- just for clarity, if I may, through that, that's, that's the, the, the petrol, that's just the, um, the petrol excise part of it.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, so that's the twenty-five on top of the fuel costs, on top of all the other costs of running the boat.
Right, thank you. Um, councillor, councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. Um, I, I do appreciate the spirit, uh, that this, um, amended recommendation is brought before us, because it does seek to address uh what has occurred in the past, and that is that council does play favourites in terms of who it charges and who it doesn't. And there is an unfair regime, in my view, uh, when it comes to other community services. Uh, that being said, I want, um, the boat ramp fees chucked off the end of the wharf, dead and sleeping with the fishes now. So I'd rather do that through the, um, recommendation E which sits above, so therefore I will be uh voting against this E, because I do support the other one for that reason, uh, just for clarity and certainty for the community going forward. But I certainly welcome the debate around equity of all user fees and charges. Um, I would also note talking about user pays in this context is not quite accurate, uh, because if you look at the financials, uh, what council is budgeting to receive from boat ramp users, uh, averaged is actually more than what council is proposing to spend on renewals. So it's not user pays, it's user subsidisers. Uh, so rather than, and I think in terms of framing the, the debate for the public out there, uh, the proposal to continue with boat ramp charging is not a case of recovering uh the expenses from boat users, there's actually a hundred thousand dollar difference in terms of what's budgeted in revenue and what's budgeted in spending as an average. And so what's effectively happening and what could happen is over a period of ten years, um, you could have a situation where boat ramp users are subsidising the rest of council by up to a million dollars. So that's something that I think needs a little bit of clarity. Um, I think it's a bit optimistic to suggest that, uh, council's spending will be less than its revenue, however. Um, but I, I, I think that we need to can this now and to refund the annual um subscriptions that have been purchased and to move on cleanly.
Um, thank you. Thank you councillor Morris. Have we got anyone else to talk? Uh, councillor Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a very quick one. Um, I don't think councillor's curragh is quite right in that everything else is free, because there are certainly um sporting codes in the city that pay quite a bit of money to the council for the use of facilities.
Uh, point of order. Um, I didn't say everything else. I referred to some other activities and I listed them. I, I didn't say every other.
Right, sorry, I'll back off that, but there are other, um, activities that people take for their mental health that do pay quite a bit of money for renting facilities that the council owns.
Yeah, thank you councillor Taylor. Um, a, a question, uh, to Rick, would you uh consider substituting your E for the other E?
That if it fails, then where do we, um, come back to this one? So I'm happy to do that, to allow councillor Morris to put it that we just scrap it. And failing that, we come back to E.
Okay, well, would you, you want to continue on with this?
And, and then put it to the council for a vote. And, and failing this to get through, it'll, um, come back to you, but what if your theme fails?
Okay. All right, um, so we'll, we'll continue on with this. Um, so I'll, I'll talk on this. I, I agree around the disparity. But we have to look at this from the overall, and we have a lot of people in our community that are paying user fees right now. All the basketball courts, um, all our indoor facilities, they're all paying user fees. So we have to be very aware because of if us as a council decide that we're going to cut these ones, why don't we cut all the bay venue fees? You know, we're, we're, it's the same, the same sort of thing. So I think we have to be very careful around that. Um, and I absolutely support user fees. Um, I don't support them being larger than what they're paying for. And, you know, just to put that in context, if we look in that report, we're currently doing six million dollars of renewals around boat ramps. Um, you know, that, the two hundred odd thousand, uh, you know, capex, I guess, oh, oh, sorry, Opex each year doesn't include the depreciation, et cetera, from those facilities. So I don't think there's a case that the user fees are actually subsidising council or, or going to get close to that. Now, the, the problem with user fees is it's a very, it's a very hard topic to get right, because you don't want a fee that is discouraging people to be able to get out and, and do what they want. I think, you know, the issue here is, um, you know, you're, you're paying for parking around, uh, our, our boat ramps. Um, there are other boat ramps that you can go to and use for free outside of, of these ones. Um, you can also drive your car and, and launch your boat and, and drive it home and walk down if, if you'd like. Um, there is options. Um, you know, I've, I've been, well, there's, there's an option around it. I've been all around the country and uh, you know, and, and had to pay for parking, you know, whether that's in, uh, Coromandel, whether it's in, you know, Marlborough Sounds, uh, Toopo, you pay, uh, to, to use some of those facilities. Um, we, they all have a cost. And, and that's, that's just, uh, you know, where I come from. I absolutely agree. We need to do a review of this. And we need to find out, you know, what is fair and, and what is not. Um, but I don't, I don't support just, just canning these. Um, but I do, from what I have understood, um, from the community, is it is a bit clunky. There's, there's a, a few things that need to be improved right now. Um, and ongoing, the, the, the main thing that, that I have heard is they feel that they're being targeted and it is unfair. Um, but I would just, just like to put my two cents in, um, that going forward, I would like to see people that use services, um, have some contribution to those services. Uh, you know, we, we can't continue to have the ratepayer paying for everything, um, you know, that the community, um, you know, uses. And there, there are going to be cases, I, I don't agree about paying to, to, you know, walk around them out. Um, it's just, it's just not practical, uh, to, to be able to do some of these things. Um, but there are, there are other things that, you know, have a direct cost and, you know, for example, boat ramps, we don't have to provide boat ramps. Um, and if, if we didn't provide them, um, you know, then, then we wouldn't be, be bearing some of these, these costs. And, you know, the same, uh, I guess with, with other things, but we've got to take all these things into account and decide, you know, as a council, what, what we want to do. So I don't support this, um, uh, this motion. Um, but I do, I do support the, the fact that we need to look at this as a council and we need to come up with a, a solution uh going forward that, that is a lot fairer to, to everyone. And I understand that's never going to be perfect, um, because people will feel like they're paying more, but um, you know, there, there is a, a little bit of a precedence here. If we cut this, are we cutting the, the fees for indoor courts? Because, you know, that's, that's fifty dollars an hour, um, for each court and that, that will add up, uh, significantly to uh, the, the, uh, cost per ratepayer. So, yeah, that's, that's where I sit on, on this. I'm sorry, sir. Um, your, your behaviour is disrupting the meeting. Um, and you will need to leave if you're, if you're not prepared to sit and, and listen. Um, so I think we have finished, uh, discussion on that. Oh, sorry, uh, we'll go back to councillor Curragh to talk.
So I think my right of reply, um, Mahi, Mayor Mahi, I'm just uncertain what part you don't like of that, perhaps you can, um, you know, move an alternative res- um, resolution to that, because you supported a review of user fees around recreational activities. Um, and this is largely about that. So maybe is it that you're uncomfortable with just, um, to stop taking the user charges at, at the moment? Is that what you're uncomfortable with?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, for, for me, um, you know, we will, you know, the, the, I guess that review around user fees and, and that will very much come into the annual plan. Um, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable right now about, uh, you know, just, just stopping this and uh, and doing that review, because I don't think it's the time to do that review. Uh, I am very, uh, happy to, to look at the different fees and, and try to, to make that, uh, better for, for people. Um, and I guess that's in that original motion, um, you know, allowing, uh, you know, all, all people to have, uh, annual passes, et cetera. So, um, that's, that's the part that I don't accept, but I, I, I do accept around the, the review um at a future date, just, just not right now.
Thank you for clarifying your position on that. Um, so the, the, this, the timing of the review isn't specified. And as you said, it's, um, going to occur to an annual plan process, which is kicking off soon. Um, so it's very timely, I think. And so, you know, and it is, um, to focus on the disparity that exists, if I can just, uh, mention it to the members, because we have got serious disparity amongst users and nobody likes to talk about museums and art galleries and, and, and libraries. They seem sacrosanct. Um, so perhaps we need to look at that potentially, because we are looking at, what was the figure I came up with? Nine, nine hundred dollars per ratepayer for the development that we're doing per year, every year, nine hundred bucks. And here we have a small issue. So that disparity does exist. So, um, I, you know, I plead to members, you know, because what I hear, um, like the all people that, you know, you hear that it's this disparity that really drives the, the angst around, uh, why should they be targeted? And this will address that. Um, so members, uh, please, if you can, support the resolution. Um, I think it's a good way forward, um, to stop taking the money. It's pretty easy. You just put a sticker on the machine and I, I sent some, um, wording through that, uh, you know, um, no charge until further notice or something to that effect. It's pretty easy to implement that. And once, uh, the review, um, uh, happens and, uh, we look at, you know, these issues, then they might be turned on or they may be not, because we could find that, hey, we just can't address the disparity because we don't want to introduce charges to libraries. We don't want to introduce charges to galleries. We don't want to introduce charges to museums. We don't want to introduce charges to whatever, you know, so it's leaving open and it'll be a healthy process with good community consultation, because the commissioners, I don't think, did a good job when they talked about some of these user fee issues. They weren't consulted. And that's the other thing, I think, did you mention it, Mahi, that there was a lack of consultation? No, Steve Morris, I think it was. And that's what I heard too. You know, suddenly the, the machines turned up and everyone thought, oh, what's happened here? So it was a bit of, um, a bit of a shock to people. So we need, we need, yeah, we need better consultation.
Thank you councillor Curragh. Um, I therefore, uh, will, will put the motion, uh, on to the council uh that we leave the, oh, yep, sorry, to, uh, leave the report to sit on the table until it reconsideres the matter in the context of a user fee review that takes into account the disparity that exists between recreational activities for adult users and in the meantime, turn off the parking machines at boat ramps and not accept annual pass purchases. Um, I ask all those in favour, aye? Those against, no, no. Uh, sorry, we, can we have a, um, a show of hands for aye? And those against, no? Right, that, uh, motion is lost. Oh, so, sorry.
Uh, Mayor Mahi, mayor, I move A, B, and what was in the report as E removes all fees for trailer parking adjacent to Marine Park, Faridora, Waikoriri Boat Ramps, resolves to refund residents who have purchased annual passes and removes the relevant sections of the user fee and charges scheduled twenty-four, twenty-five and rescinds relevant bylaws, controls under the traffic and parking bylaw twenty thirteen.
A, B, E, sorry. Yeah, so we'll just, um, we'll just get that sorted. Um, so, yeah, hopefully if everyone's got it in front of them so they can, can understand it, I'll just, uh, read it out. Um, right at the other end. So that is, um, that the council receives the report bank boat ramp, um, parking uh fees, acknowledges the petition against the fees that were received by the previous council on tenth of June twenty twenty-four. Um, and, oh, sorry, E was it? Uh, removes all fees for trailer parking, um, adjacent to the Marine Park Faridora and, uh, Waikorori Pilot Bay Boat Ramps, resolves to refund residents who have purchased annual passes and removes the relevant sections from the user fees and charges, uh, scheduled twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and rescinds the relevant bylaw control under the traffic parking bylaw, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, have we got a second on that? Councillor Roseboom? Um, councillor, uh, Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mahi. Succinctly, uh, I've spoken to most of it in the, um, previous resolution. Um, but also to say that the figure of twenty dollars per day is on the high side when you look at the other boat ramp uh charges around the country.
Okay, thank you. Is there one, uh, councillor Roseboom, you wanna?
I'll reserve my right to speak till after everyone else has spoken.
Okay, perfect. Councillor Curragh?
Look, I, I will support it, even though my main objective was to find parity and perhaps introduction of user fees to other uh facilities where the users are quite able to afford to pay. Um, but in the context of the lack of consultation, I could support this because it wasn't done well, this particular one. Sorry, particular one. And so, um, moving forward, when we do the review, I'm not sure of the timing, but I've heard it's during the annual plan process, this could be relitigated, so the machines can stay there. Um, and simply put that sticker on there, that, um, you know, there will be no fees um taken, and then they can be re-implemented should, uh, the outcome of, of this review, right here we're having, um, uh, provides that outcome that, um, they be introduced. So meantime, I need, I think we do need to take a breather on this, you know, satisfy some of those, uh, that people that are strongly resistant to actually paying this because of the inequities that exist. And, and, and other councils, when you compare other councils and their user fees, uh, we had a list there and, um, most of them were actually lower than, than ours, but we also don't know about the level of disparity at other councils, because they could be charging fees at other facilities where that, there's, you know, a, a much lower level of disparity. So we just don't know that information.
Uh, councillor Baker?
Yeah, I could do. Um, yeah, just want to acknowledge those that are here, um, to hear about this particular kopapa um, and how aggrieved you are and must feel about the lack of consultation and engagement for sure. Um, I, I hear you and I, and I see that and I feel that. Uh, with respect, I disagree with the current motion that is tabled. Um, only because the precedent's already been, been set with user fees and it will open up, in my opinion, um, a big can of worms around, um, other users for different facilities that are having to pay, um, for those respective facilities. Um, so I do think that, and I agree with the concept of, of user fees, it's a great, um, service that we, no, that's not true. It's a great amenity, but the service- It's a great amenity, but the service could be done a hell of a lot better than what it is. Which is some of the feedback that I've received from members of my, my ward, as well as friends and family who have, who have boats themselves, who aren't opposed to boat fees. But I do agree that the fee of twenty dollars per tick or even the two hundred dollar annual fee is ridiculous. And perhaps we table a reduction in the cost that's associated to that service. And it looks like, from what I can see here, the current recommendations will, will fit that. And perhaps D can be amended to address the change in those fees. I think that was my, my point for concern. Yeah, the, the fee currently at the moment is just too high. I mean, not consistent with, proportionately with the rest of the user fees that people currently pay for, so, or don't pay.
Thank you. I will, I will speak, I don't have a lot more to, to add. Apart from, I would also support, you know, looking at, at reducing those fees. But I don't support scrapping them altogether. And, you know, that comes from my, my personal view that people should contribute towards things that they, they use. And, you know, yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, where, where it's, where it's possible and feasible and, you know, then, then that should, should be done. So, you know, that's, that's my personal view. But, you know, that's, is there any other people that'd like to speak? Councillor Taylor?
Sorry, I just can't get past the point that this makes a precedent. We'll have basketball on air next week, looking to get their fees taken out. And there'll be along this right behind them, I'd imagine.
Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I guess I have a different view to councillor Baker and councillor Taylor in terms of the precedent. I think that the precedent has already been set, which is that where there is public awareness in a community consultation process, there was pushback against user fees very strongly from a number of sectors, and the council responded to that. The fact that people didn't respond in such force was, I think, a reflection on the council, not on the people who have a view out there in the community. Now, I can be proven wrong by going to consultation again, but I think it is, it does make sense to do that through a, a long-term plan amendment or an annual plan process. But I think in the meantime, it just, to me, it's, it just seems blatantly obvious that this council knew that there wasn't good engagement from that community and, and is trying now to still impose it on the ground of precedent. And I think that's a very bad precedent to take. I think we need to look at the reality, which is that many, many, many people in this community knew nothing about this and would have submitted to council. And the difference between those other things is that they were highlighted proactively by the commissioners in, in council meetings. And I listened into a number of those meetings. And I, I feel I'm fairly well informed on what happened under the commission in the previous year. And I had no idea about this.
You've already spoken, so, yeah. Yeah, councillor, any others before we go to councillor Roseboom? Councillor Roseboom?
Right, I'm speaking in support of councillor Morris's motion, certainly because we're not comparing apples with apples. Clubs are clubs, individuals are individuals. Boat ramp users are predominantly individual citizens of Taronga. Citizens of clubs who activate our sports grounds and gymnasiums are part, generally part of clubs. They have affiliation fees to run as a club. They pay a club fee to support whatever, and all clubs that use facilities provided by councils on national basis pay an affiliation fee to the national body. So they're already paying. Individual users are separate residents and rate payers, so as individuals are provided functions. And this goes further to the, for a wider discussion amongst us as council. What do our rate payers and residents expect for their rates? What are we actually providing for them? So when we do the fee structure, how do we allocate who pays what to who, to the council for the service provided? And what does the general public expect in return when they pay their rates annually? What services are we providing and then what charge we put on it? If we need to adjust rates or fees, that needs to be done through a community consultation period. And as councillor Crowther's pointed out, the last three years, Taronga residents have generally felt left out of that consultation process. And we, as a new democratic elected council, need to start a more inclusive process where all those who pay rates get to have a word on how that rate is spent and apportioned around Taronga. So I'm supporting councillor Morris's motion.
Right, councillor Morris?
Thank you, mahe. Briefly, just for information as well, the twenty dollar fee for launching a boat at Kinloch is not comparable in my view, because it's a privately owned marina rather than a council facility. And in addition to that, if you look at the facilities that you get in Taupo for six dollars, in my view, they are superior to so many of the facilities around Taronga. I understand, of course, there's a difference between fresh water and salt water, but I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I now put the motion to council that we receive the report, boat ramp parking fees, acknowledge the petition against the fees that was received by the previous council on 10 June 2024, removes all fees for trailer parking adjacent to Marine Park Farirua and Waikoriri Pilot Bay Boat Ramps, resolves to refund residents who have purchased annual passes and remove the relevant sections from the user fees and charges scheduled 2024/2025 and rescinds the relevant bylaw controls under the traffic and parking bylaw 2023. I ask all those in favour to raise your hands. And those against? And that motion is carried. I would now like to adjourn the meeting as we, we break for, for lunch. And we'll be back here in, what's, where's the? Yeah, we'll, we'll resume at 12:20. Thank you. Oh, sorry, 1:20, 1:20. Thank you.
Right, good afternoon everyone. We'll reconvene with the the next item on the agenda of update on local water done well. And we'll we'll take the report as read, but Christine Jones, General Manager, Strategy, Growth and Governance, Cathy Davison, Actor Director of City Waters, and Stephen Burton, Transformation Lead, Water Services, will be speaking to the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, I thought we'd just speak to it quite quickly. So, as I say, take the report as read. So you'll be aware, obviously, that there are quite a lot happening in the local waters space at the moment. And that the coalition government made some changes to what was previously proposed by the outgoing government. That's one piece of legislation that's been being passed, and there is another that's expected in August, and then further by the end of the calendar year. The previous councils, that is the commission, had passed a resolution which is outlined in paragraph three of the report, where they'd defined a preferred solution or a preferred process to move forward, which was establishment of a CCO, a council-controlled organisation, together with Western Bay. Some of the changes that the coalition of government has introduced means that we do really just need to go back and check that that is the best pathway now, given the options are available, particularly with the hot 500% debt rate ratio that the council or the CCO could take forward in terms of waters. So this report really just gives you an update on everything that's been happening, the key things that have been happening at the national level, the key components of the legislation as we understand them at the moment. There's material coming out pretty much on a daily to weekly basis from Wellington on this issue. And in paragraph twenty four and twenty five, we talk about our work programme. So we are progressing an indicative business model. We're using the Treasury Better Business Case approach broadly, just as a methodology to look at options. We're thinking about it both from a waters perspective, a water services perspective, but also from a council perspective. So if water services were to go into some other entity, what would that mean for the remaining council business? And trying to think of it collectively from a community perspective across everything that council does, including waters. So we're trying to bring those different different lenses to the equation. We're well underway with that work, and we're expecting to be able to bring you something towards the end of October for you to start to give some direction around your view on the way forward. So this is really just an update report. It's slightly varied from the direction that the previous It's slightly varied from the direction that the previous council had set because of the further decisions that the government's made. So happy to take any questions.
But thank you. Questions, councillor Roseboom?
Good afternoon, Christine. Just one, given that they, the previous council's preferred model was a joint one with the Western Bay, given the changes, does Western Bay still agree to that model?
We're still having conversations with them. At the moment, both councils are keen to continue to leave that option open. But we will be, we're just preparing a timeline as to when we'd need a decision from them as to whether they want to participate potentially right from the beginning. Or the other option is we design an approach or a model that would enable them to join at a later point in time. So that might be sort of medium or long term. So we are having that conversation, would bring back their view. They haven't made any decisions as a group of elected members either, but at a staff level, we're working to keep the options open.
Yeah, councillor Crowther?
Yeah, thank you, Christine. Can you please clarify this? What I'm reading is sort of almost contradictory around Tamanautaui, where it says under eight, it says Tamanautaui will not apply when Tomata Aruai sets wastewater standards. Nine says the government is proposing to repeal the requirements that give effect to Tamanautaui. And then under thirty-eight, it says the, what was agreed by this council, a set of principles will be used to guide the development of the indicative business case, including waters reform must support the implementation of Tamanautaui in all aspects. Now, given, given that time has gone on since that was presumably the plan, is the plan now for the council to follow central governments' other two statements? Or is there still a view that the council needs to advocate for Tamanautaui against what the coalition government is pushing?
Might Steve Burton, Stephen Burton just comment on it? I think what I would say is that the the council commission gave us some really clear direction about understanding and recognising the values that were important to Tonga la Fenua. And we would be looking to do that because that still stands. That's part of our protocols and the way we actually always work with Tonga la Fenua. Then you have this other layer that sits over the top of that, which is Tamanautaui, which I'll pass over to Stephen to speak to.
Kiara. Yes, what Christine said is correct. We've continued to work in the basis of, on the principles of Tamanautaui and working with our hapu and iwi partners in that sense. So we are still working in that space. The the stuff that's coming out of government is still not fully clear. They, the hierarchy of wastewater standards still hasn't landed. It's just, it's in the process of being worked through. It would be, you know, to try and speculate exactly what it's going to land on is very hard. But I think, you know, the basic principles about water first and 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 working way through that, that that is part of the way we've been approaching it.
Councillor Crowther?
Through the chair. Well, then, if that's correct, which, you know, I have no reason to know differently, then is number eight literally correct when it says Tamanautaui will not? Or should it say may not apply when Tomata Aruai? Because you're just saying it wasn't clear around the wastewater standards. It's quite an important distinction. Having heard some of the parliamentary discussion around it, it's it's an incredibly pointed issue for a lot of people. If you like, on both sides or all sides. And it makes a very definitive statement to us, saying that it will not apply, but is that a may not apply?
So what that paragraph is saying, those are the areas that are in the bill, the second bill. And that's what we understand as likely to flow through. That's not a council staff decision. This is what's coming from it. So this is just giving you an update as to what we are being advised of or understand is happening at a national level. And whether that rolls out in the final legislation is a subject to the legislation development processes. But this is the current state of playing.
Any other questions, staff? Councillor Shilla?
Through the chair, quickly, just with the development of the business case. So potentially Western Bay as a joint partner or just ourselves, and then bolt-ons. And then I'm assuming that those then, other smaller councils or however we could, the bolt-on model could be used in the future for more than one other entity?
Our thinking is to look to design it so that it is flexible to change over time, including councils joining or not.
Thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
Sorry, I presume when we get the recommendation, it'll talk about leaving it in the house as opposed to the CCO? That'll be a...
Yes, so, and you'll see, there's five models that, in paragraph seventeen, that Department of Internal Affairs has suggested or has put out as potential. So we're just going to use those five models as a base for the options that we assess, absolutely.
I think the the disadvantage of that is not having access to the 500% borrowing if it's in-house. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. But Paul might want to comment, but there are some reasons why you want to do that. Though from a council-wide, which is why I said we're looking at from both a council total package perspective and a waters package. And we were doing modelling to understand that from a financials perspective about what it means for debt. But I don't know, Paul, if you want to add to that further?
I know, that that's absolutely correct. The modelling we're doing at the moment is really just to understand because we have invested quite a lot in waters. So it is actually already well in the four hundreds on what that means. But it will, it will depend as we apply those structures in terms of what equity mixes, for example, we put in that will determine how that will be balanced out. So we'll bring all that back.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much to the staff for that. I will now call for a mover and seconder of the recommendations set out in the report. And that is that the council receives the report update on local waters done well. Notes that legislation to implement local waters done well is still in development. Notes that council will follow the indicative business case approach guided by the Treasury Better Business Case Model to explore future service delivery options under the Local Waters Done Well framework. Can I have a mover for that motion? Moved by councillor Taylor, seconded by councillor Roseboom. Would the mover like to speak to it? Okay, councillor Roseboom, would she like to speak to it?
Just that I'd like the 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 work that's being done. I'd prefer that we could achieve a combined CCO with us and Western Bay, given that a large chunk of our water infrastructure is actually in their governance zone, so to speak. So if we could join forces, it would be very helpful. But apart from that, though, nothing else.
Thank you. And open it up to discussion and debate. Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think the two things I'm most focused on are to have a very well-informed engagement or consultation process with our local communities. There's been a big gap in Taonga around public discussion around Three Waters slash Local Water Done Well compared to many other councils. It's been an absolute passionate issue, in the same way that fluoride was here for many councils around this country. And because of the lack of democratically-elected council, we didn't have that. I think we need to really be conscious of the need to bring people up to date and be well-informed around that debate. It's actually very nuanced. I am not yet of the view that councillor Roseboom is around what the best option is. I think there are some big pros and cons for all the options. And not the least being that we might have more debt headroom if we keep it in-house, depending on what, you know, given the, given the high debt ratio for where our waters infrastructure, depending on the charging model that needs to flow through from the government's reforms. So, you know, I think there are a whole lot of things to weigh up, and I just encourage as much as possible to get the information to us and to our communities as soon as possible.
Any other discussion, debate? Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. One of the things we need to, of course, be cognisant of in working with our partners in the Western Bay is that a model which includes both city and district may, and I say may, impact Taonga city rate payers more than Western Bay district rate payers. Important to not look at boundaries, I think, in terms of relationships and moving forward. But I think it's something we need to be aware of.
All right, if that's all the the discussion, I'll therefore put the resolution as I I read out, or the the motion as I read out to council up. And I ask all those in favour, aye?
Aye.
Those against, no? Okay, that motion is carried. We'll now move on to Fifteenth Avenue to Welcome Bay, single-stage business case. So Nick Johansson, General Manager Infrastructure, and Chris Farnsworth, Senior Project Manager, Major Projects, will be speaking to the report and have a PowerPoint presentation to start with. This has been loaded into the Stella library. Oh, so we've got Mike Seaborn as well joining us?
Yeah, Kiara. Yeah, thank you. Yes, and Mike and I, we will cover the introduction, the presentation. And if there are any questions pertaining to the to the business case per se or any other detail, we might have to refer that to Jason Spencer, who's looking after the the major projects team, or Chris Farnsworth, who's the project manager. So one of our five major transport projects is now at a critical milestone with a business case completed to submit to the NZTA. The Fifteenth Avenue Welcome Bay has had a long history. And we'll see some pictures shortly, which speaks for themselves, of congestion, poor level of service, access and safety problems. It has also had a long history of options being looked at, potential solutions. And there's been reams and reams of paper written about that in the past. The draft business case is put to you for consideration. But with your permission, we'll we'll take five or 10 minutes to go through the the presentation we've put up there. But I also just wanted to mention that the paper includes a few extracurricular clauses about business cases for NZTA, which we usually don't put into those papers. But we thought, since this is probably, for some of you, the the first exposure you have to that process, we thought it might be useful for you to to get your head around that. And secondly, I just wanted to mention also that these business cases are not developed in isolation from NZTA. But we do get their input along the way, from particularly from their investment advisers. So it's not like when we handed over to them now that it's the first time they'll see it. So they're they're familiar with the context. They provide us with advice along the way. And particularly now around the the shift in government policy statement and what that may mean for a business case like this. We've had their input over the last number of months in order to shift it and make it better suited for that government policy statement. And it aligns with with it particularly related to economic growth and productivity. I also wanted to mention the timing because we have this business case due to Waka Katahi for their board consideration in October. That gives them a pretty tight timeline to go through their committees that will then ultimately provide advice to the board in October. So the timing for us is is a bit critical now. And that's because we have spent some time adjusting the business case to suit the new GPS. So if I hand over the mic to walk through the presentation, but I I point you to the to the picture there, which which speaks for itself.
Kiara, Mayor and councillors, this is one of our sort of key projects within the Taonga City Council area with regard to transport. And just so you get a bit of context on that, and we can roll through to the next slide if you like. The Taonga, this particular project is one of those projects that have sat around our plans of things to do for quite some time. And as a result, Taonga City Council, the Regional Council, Western Bay District Council and the Waka Katahi put together a programme of activity so that we had a prioritised list of things to do. Now, this is very normal in most of our jurisdictions around the country. And that's called the the TSP or the Taonga System Plan. This project is about eighth on that list. And what does that mean? Well, that means it's in the top order of priority for lists of things to do for for the Taonga area. I can provide the list of the other things as a secondary item. But at this stage, this is the the project that is the most ready and the highest priority for submission to Waka Katahi. One of the elements here is we have to also talk to the Regional Council and the development of the RLTP, the Regional Land Transport Programme. And that is a a vehicle by which we apply for government funding to to part fund our projects through the NLTP, the National Land Transport Programme. So transport is a bit convoluted and at times can go back and forwards. But in that process, this project is sixth on the RLTP. So that also means for the region, the the mayors and and other representatives across the Bay plenty agree that this is a high priority project for the region as well. So as you can see from the slide above, you've got sort of your key problems that that this project seeks to to address. And I think it's fair to say that movement and that transport choice and access are the the key ways that we describe those transport negative dis-benefits. So congestion, you might experience it that way, is how do you can you use public transport and the other modes? And what sort of access does this link provide for the Taonga system, transport system? So what that does, and particularly with the business case process, it's really important that big pieces of infrastructure get focused on what is the problem and solving that problem. And the the scope and the the project you see before you in that business case is a reaction to that. And then there's a quite a lot of work that's in between that problem definition and then coming up with some preferred solutions. So just to highlight a couple of those things, I think it's one of the projects that are in our TSP that is probably the more GPS-aligned with regard to the the recent government change. And partially, that's because it had some time to actually adjust that scope. And what you see in the in the document is your stage one versus stage two scope elements that are outlined in the proposal. So we might move on with it, it's okay. I won't go through the the details of the project. We could sit here for for a while. But I think just stepping back from the proposal itself, this is about utilizing this existing corridor more efficiently. A full landing proposal was considered as part of the the solution here. But there are some serious barriers to implementing a full landing proposal, notwithstanding the environmental effects of that and building in the coastal marine area, but also the community feedback around the proposal and its suitability for that part of Taonga. And I think that was an important part of that MCA or Multi-Criteria Analysis Process of choosing options. So as a as a transport planner by trade, this is a way of utilizing the space that you've got there to move people, more people through it. And you can see that through the contra-flow lanes or the lanes that swap around in the different peaks. And it's been done on the Harbour Bridge for years and other locations around New Zealand. And also the idea that we could potentially use some of the lanes in the future for what we're calling T1 or T2, T2 and T3 lanes, or where you get car sharing and all that sort of thing. But again, that's something that the the proposal looks to to consider as a future option. I think it's also fair to say, and as a former Welcome Bay resident myself, that the corridor itself is a is a strong link between the CBD and the communities out there. And it has to serve this purpose sort of efficiently. And I think the proposal goes into that in in some degree. So we can move to that next stage. Okay, just as a way of making it clear, as part of the GPS and as part of the project moving through to the next phase, we've broken the project into two steps. And I think the point we'd like to make here is if we go back to those problem statements, we're trying to solve those problems as a transport proposal. Some of those problems are affordable and they are able to be done now. And I think what staff have prepared for you are some options for you to think about this and pick your path forward in terms of what's going to happen. And what we're asking you to to give us endorsement around is to be able to submit our proposal to Waka Katahi so that they can include it in the NLTP and then also enable us to go to the next stage. It's pretty important from a program perspective that we are trying to keep on track. The impact of that delay would could be in the order of four months. Waka Katahi board only meets so often. Those board meetings between now and Christmas are usually full and unable to be to be considered these type of proposals. So we're unlikely to get in front of the board until next year. And that makes a considerable effect on our program going forward. So hence why we're expressing our urgency and our concern around that urgency to you today. So hence why we're expressing our urgency and our concern around that urgency to you today. One of the key parts here is that we are looking just to go to the next phase. So we can go to the next slide if you like. Just a quick deli into the business case process. It's called a single-stage business case because it just overlaps two steps in the Waka Katahi business case process. And really, what this is about is taking a long list of options and coming up with a preferred solution to take forward. The elements of that, where we have done community consultation, we have taken it through the subject meta-expertise, peer reviews and tests and assessments. We've come up from a professional perspective that it will work, that it has every chance of delivering the benefits, that we're saying it will. We have a reasonable certainty around costs, and we'll go into the P50 estimate definition, if you like, in a second. And we're ready to submit that to Waka Katahi. Now, this process is very much dictated by Waka Katahi, and you're supposed to develop a certain amount of information before you submit, and we're at that stage now. There's more work to do, there's more understanding that we need to drive around cost and scope, and what is in and out of that proposal as a next step. But this is the point by which we agree with our partners, or not, to take the proposal forward as a going project. Just a hint there, sorry, about the key project risks. The approval of the SSBC by Waka Katahi Board is absolutely a hurdle we must clear. The feasibility of the tidal flow in the HOV lanes or T2 lanes, that will be tested in the next phase, but it has not been verified yet. It's not needed right now, but at this next stage, we'll have to do that. The traffic disruption during construction is a key concern. We understand that our network reacts quite extremely to small things, this is a big thing, right across the centre of our city. So that's absolutely something that the team are working on, on trying to provide options there and how do we manage that. So there's a risk that we don't have it fully bottomed out, but it will be bottomed out in the next part of the proposal. Move on to the next slide. The financials of the project, and perhaps this is where we can talk about P50?
Yeah, so we deal with issues of cost bands, we talk about either P50 or P95. And if you haven't come across it before, P50 is considered the most likely cost with what you know at this point in time. So 50, if you were to build this twice, once it would come over the P50 and once it would come under. That's not considered enough certainty when you go through the funding application and the business case approval process. So what NZTA requires us to talk in terms of the P95. The P95, so that's in 5% increments, you talk about their costs and risk-associated costs to a project. So P95 basically means that if you were to build this 20 times, you would be over, that's P95 only once. And the other 19 times, you would be either at P95 or below it. So it's, it's just an acknowledged process in costings and engineering that you talk about a P50 and a P95. And this is what the NZTA requires for their certainty and understanding of the costs. And also that when they consider the affordability of the business cases that they consider, that they compare like for like. So that's why we have to stick to those stipulated rules around P50 and P95. So I hope that helps in the understanding of it.
I think the last point to add around that is, that's required at this stage. And as we go through the next stage, there's a higher level of certainty required. Might move through that. Okay, just moving on to next steps, and then we can quickly get to questions. So that the plan at this stage is to formally submit that single-stage business case with the council's leave. And then that will head towards the Waka Katahi Board for consideration in around October. And all wind behind us and on a sunny day, we'll have approval. And we will be able to move into the next phase of the project early next year. And that is our plan if things go the way that we would like them to. However, any kind of change from that proposal will result in a delay. And I think the key, as mentioned at the beginning, is that we will miss a window with the board that won't come back open until early, or maybe March next year, when we can get that particular business case in front of the meeting. But that's to be considered as part of the discussion. I think I'll leave it there and leave Florida. Oh, there is one more, sorry, this was a late entry and I forgot about it. My apologies. Our indicative programme just highlights the steps that we are looking at in order to deliver on this. And I think it's important to note that this is our planned programme at this stage. And you can see the end dates for this proposal if we are to get through all the hurdles that we can get to. So this is how it would manifest if we were able to get through the approval steps that were required along the way. So really just for information.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I think I have heard work being done on Tarot Road for about the last 15 to 20 years. So it's nice to finally have something come and hopefully we can make a decision. So I was just interested, obviously, between that sort of tidal flow and four-laning. As I understand, we do want to get this going. So what, have you got any sort of indicative cost of potentially what it would cost to four-laner?
Yeah, so the four-laning of the bridge, so the proposal as it currently stands includes four-laning until you get to the bottom of the hill, the corner and onto the bridge, basically. So the four-laning of the bridge only, we would be looking at it in excess of $200 million.
So there's four-laning everywhere but the bridge, it's only the bridge that's tidal?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought it was Tarot Road as.
Beyond the Tarot Road Bridge, it's, 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 you get to points where there's not four-lane configuration as well.
So Tarot Road and the bridge is not four-laned, that's tidal flow, all tidal flow? But there is another, there is a third lane on Tarot Road that, from the bottom of Fifteenth Ave to the bridge?
So from Cameron Road to Borough Street is the four-lanings, three-laning of Tarot Road to the Hidereny Bridge and Causeway.
And this, I guess a supplementary to that is, is it obviously possible to four-lan that in future? And would that be cheaper to do it as one now, or, you know, are we, the work we're doing is going to contribute to that four-laning?
Yeah, so we have looked at different options on that. So in the future, there would be an opportunity to build a new bridge, to four-lan the whole thing, or actually keep a couple of lanes on the current bridge and build a two-lane bridge to enter that capacity. With the four-laning scenario of a new bridge, you would probably use the existing bridge for multimodal purposes. It becomes quite a theoretical exercise, though, just in terms of the approval process with NZTA. And I understand the wish to discuss the four-laning option. But we have now identified the feasibility of using the current structure to give us another 40 years of serviceable life. That would most likely mean that even if we wanted to and felt that a business case could be warranted to go four-laning across the history, that would not be funded by NZTA because it's, they look at options of do nothing, do minimum, and then creating an acceptable level of service. If you go beyond that, it's likely that they would not contribute the 51% funding. We can't, we can't be certain about that, but there's a very, very high likelihood that they would say, thank you, but no, thank you.
Okay, any, any questions for staff? councillor Taylor?
Sorry, just carrying on with that discussion about the four-laning. So with the current proposal, it's 40 years. Does that mean in 40 years' time, it's going to look like it does now? Or in 10 years' time, is it going to be having the same issues that we're having now?
The 40 years is the serviceable life of the structure per se. The level of service will run out of capacity in about 20 years or beyond. But that's if nothing else happens, though. So that's if we keep growing, the future of transport looks pretty much what it does now. Most people hop in the car and take the car to work. So we are looking at beyond a 20-year capacity of that bridge if other things in transport changes with it. And that's considering that, I think it's about 2,500 properties in the Welcome Bay area that would also be serviced in that period of time.
Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Three questions, one is in relation to the T2 lane starting on Fifteenth Ave as part of the four-laning project down to Tarot Road. It says in the agenda and then in the presentation that that will start as a T2. So my question is, what would the impact be on the business case and the viability of the business case if there was no mention of it being or starting as T2 down Fifteenth Ave? And it was just left open as an option like Tarot Road and the bridge? Second question is, in any case, regardless of the impact on the business case, will that decision come back to the council of the day when construction is complete? Like, we'd have to say this is T2 at that time, you know, so we're not, so, yeah, you get where I'm going there. And the third one is in regard to the bridge piers, the existing historic bridge piers. Is that where the clip-on cycle walkway would go or would it be on the other side?
Through you, Chair. In terms of the T2 proposal, the significant amount of benefits in the proposal, so you see it's about 3.6 or so through the T2 lane, but the proposal still has a positive VCR without it. So it's been sensitivity-tested in terms of its applicability. So T2 lanes, from an operational perspective, we would see getting council endorsement earlier in terms of, it's also part of how we might regulate that environment, so we'd need to bring it before for a decision. But also, there's some time for us to understand the infrastructure required to enforce T2. And there are other examples around the country which we will be using to use as a starting point for this particular proposal. So we would see that being, if, again, if all the barriers were, sorry, barriers, I wouldn't say that, if all the decisions were required to get there, we would probably construct that as part of the construction phase. It makes more sense to do as much of that implementation as quick as you can. But again, it's a significant piece of scope that we would need to confirm it's going to be viable. And it does actually play out the way that our forecasting has said it would.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, supplementary on that point, if I may, oh, sorry to cut you off, Nick, if you were going to refer to it. I just want some level of comfort that what we're doing today is, and I think I'm hearing you say that there is a decision point, there would be a decision point coming back to council in terms of T2 on Fifteenth Ave before there's an obligation to make that take place.
Yeah, that is correct. So this is not the last time you see it, before you cut the ribbon to the completed projects. We will kick off the, the design process. And as we have, I think when we get to about 70, 75% of the design, we would take it back here for a conversation. And from an operational perspective, tell you about what that means, and then again at 100%. And when, before we would put it to the market, which basically then locks it into a contract for development, there'll be a final opportunity for you to make sure that, a, we have the best solution, but also that we have a procurement strategy that best represents the value for money and all those sorts of things. So I would have thought probably two or three times it will come here before anything is locked in terms of contracts to deliver.
Thank you, Nick. councillor Kuruk.
Thank you, guys. In terms of the T2 proposal, has there been any surveys done in terms of passengers per vehicle at peak times along there? And what does that look like with the current ratio?
For you, Mr Chair, without knowing the exact numbers off the top of my head, what the obvious practice approach is that we do the surveys along the route for current state, and we use that to model and forecast going forward. And that's how we determine the impact and what economics are, you know, result from it. So the short answer is yes, but I can't give them to you off the top of my head right now. Yeah, and it is, it is from a perspective of where this project is at now, a very viable solution going forward to achieve the things it's supposed to achieve. And our forecasting is to show that. The next step is very much to verify and to go to that next level of verification around how effective that might be. And that comes with some things like understanding how you enforce it and making sure that lane is available for its intended purpose and how effective is that enforcement, so on and so forth. We've got to go through and figure out how that actually works in real time, real life. But at this point, we do have the right level of information to understand that it's viable.
And I'll just touch back on the, I think it was your second or third question, councillor Morris, about the clip-on and which side it goes. It goes on the side where the, where the piers are at the moment, or columns come out of the water. And, but, and that's also where the turns are. So there will be sufficient space between the clip-on and the existing piers.
Councillor Baker?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Do we know how much pressure, you know, when this project is done, how much pressure this is going to relieve on congestion? Like, is it going to feel like the school holidays, how the school holidays, do you know what I mean?
Through you, Mr Chair. Which could be the school holidays all the time from a transport perspective. But I think it's a hard thing to put your finger on. What we do know is that there will be a material effect on people's journey times. So they will save time travelling down this corridor at peak. Everyone's experience of a corridor is often quite different. And what we know through this proposal is that a significant amount of that reliability is improved. And I think that's almost more important than your actual journey time, is that you'll have more consistent journey time, you better anticipate. Of course, there's background growth and as people move to come into the city and so on and so forth, the urban fabric changes. And so that might change things in the corridor, but for the most part, it'll be way more reliable than it is at the moment. At the moment, when you get beyond what is called a level of service F, you get into that gridlock point. And that's what we're trying to avoid at all costs, is that when it just ceases by itself. And so this pushes that further out. But day-to-day, you never know, sometimes something on the network will just create some congestion and it's, we don't know why sometimes. But yeah, overall, reliability will go up.
One less excuse for you, councillor Baker. Councillor Skola?
Thank you, Mayor Mahe. Just a quick question on the second to last slide, you said putting the project in for approval. What are the chances of getting that as the next point suggested that that just happened? So what are the, what happens in between those two bullet points?
Through you, Mr Chair, and being a born optimist, I think we put that slide up. In all reality, excuse me, Waka Katahi has fundamentally changed the way it looks at projects, and that's as in reaction to the GPS. So whilst we're quietly confident, we're also realistic. What it has to do is, the board has to be comfortable that it aligns with the GPS. And we've done the work to do that. We've also worked with our partners, Waka Katahi locally, to make sure that we're singing off the same song sheet with regard to that. And I think we've pulled the levers we can pull to make it presentable, if you like, and to the board. Having said that, what I do know in the local government activity class, that's funding specifically local government goes to, the amount of money in there is not, hasn't changed. Um, and it's competitive. And so we, we need a project that has a good VCR, that is very much GPS aligned uh and that we are confident we can deliver it. And I think we tick all three boxes with this, this project and that's why it's here today. And, and we're giving it to you with the agency.
Uh, any other questions? Councillor Schola?
Schola.
Schola, Schola.
That's it. Um, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I just was driving over there in, in the weekend. Um, it's a current two lanes plus the uh walkway, so they're going to three. Obviously, all the workings are there, those, there's enough space and, or is there additional extra work to the bridges, a little bit of quick, high level to, you know, to make sure that that flow will be able to be achieved?
For you, Mr. Chair, and short answer is yes. Um, we have a, uh, we're accommodating all those movements on that proposal. Um, the next stage is more detailed design. So we do survey, we do um a much more uh understanding of the cross-section we need and how that literal widths of how we fit things in. But um at this stage, it's past muster at a, at a higher level and we're going to the next level in the next phase. But that's all. And partially why the clip-on on the, the bridge is there to create that more space and, and be able to provide for that movement.
Uh, councillor Crowther.
Thank you. Um, is, is the estimated P ninety-five cost? I presume you sort of got a ballpark, even though it's not written there that I've seen. I- i- is that just prorata? Like, is that, is that a hundred and five for stage one at your best guess right now?
But there's a, there's a risk analysis around that. So um you, you apply um a, a a r- risk probability and cost to a number of things that could happen to the project. And at this stage, it's, it's quite a high level, but um it's, it's sort of a bell curve applies uh basically. And, and so it's, it's not just a percentage, but there's some analyses behind it.
Sure, but, but I, I guess what I'm asking, given you've got the total cost in a P ninety-five but not the stage one, is there a reason to suspect stage one is a different um ratio to P fifty compared to the, you know, to the overall?
I c- I couldn't tell you from the top of my head. Um, now I would have to ask Jason maybe to comment on that.
Councillors. Um, the, the best way to describe it is when we do a submission into NZTA, we can only submit on a P fifty anyway. So that's what the figures is that we have to, to run through. Although that we've done peer review and analysis and risk assessments, et cetera, with our peer reviewers, P ninety-five throws it up at a, a different figure simply because, as um Nick was saying earlier on, they, they have to recalculate on those bases is to make sure that the likes of NZTA are fully aware of where the project will get to at the P ninety-five stage. And that's where we have to go back to NZTA and actually put formal other applications in to say this is where that project is now. But we have to let them know right at this stage now when we do the, the initial submission at a P fifty.
Sure. I, I guess just from a elected member point of view, I'm, I'm probably in the camp that says I'd, I'd rather work from the P ninety-five, having looked at P fifties and P ninety-fives for other projects. In theory, you're right, Nick, but in practice, absolutely not. Um, you know, meaning the projects are not, you, you're quite right, that the project, the projects have just blown out past P ninety-five. So to make a decision on a P fifty is very, uh, yeah, risky. Um, that, the other question is, what is the estimated portion of the total project cost for stage one that relates to four-laning fifteenth Ave versus the portion that relates to three-laning turret um and, and putting it across the bridge? That, that's a significant concern for a lot of people in our community. Are, are we spending a big chunk of the money on a three-laning solution that may last twenty years, may last fifteen, may last ten, whatever? But um I guess, you know, the flip side of that is it looks to me like we're spending a significant portion on fifteenth four-laning, but it'd be nice to know presumably in the cost that's been figured out.
Uh, and within the business case, I believe it just schedules that out of where most of that cost is on a, a detailed position as opposed to the high rolled um table that we got here. But the three-laning across the bus, uh, across uh Harini Bridge with the tidal flow uh set against the four-laning, which is up fifteenth, is about a forty, sixty percent ratio difference on cost. So that, then they're near, but they're, they're not way different.
So it's about sixty for the fifteenth portion, you're saying? Yep, yep, yep. No, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Just, just to check, it was still saying.
Uh, any further questions? Uh, yeah, councillor Taylor.
Um, probably early days yet, but just um could you give us some idea of what your mitigation on the disruption is gonna be?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, we are planning works um in and around the network, particularly on Fraser and other places to help alleviate some of the demand, particularly on the fifteenth, but it's not an easy spot. Um, and, and of course, uh, but any kind of construction um uh on the network will create diverted routes. So what we are doing is we're working on a project with Waikatoi to operate the, the whole transport system and as one um sort of TOC, Transport Operations Centre. And we, we make sure that we schedule our other construction projects on diversionary routes differently. Uh, that we're looking at um communicating with our public what the level of delay it is that you're going to experience during construction at that time. Uh, so there's a project underway to, to do that. And this was born of the T five projects themselves. Um, or the, the big five projects, if you like, so that we kind of coordinate a lot better with our um partners on what we dig up at what times. Um, and when we do that and how we do that. So that's one element of, of that. We're also, um, I think through the, the procurement process, uh, making sure that our contractors know and understand uh the implications they have on, on the network. And I think the construction methodology is pretty critical here. Um, and we're, we're going to incentivize the uh management of traffic uh in a better way, uh, because they can come up with some innovative ideas from around the country that we want to apply here. Um, so we're, we're doing that as well. And um the, the last thing is, is to communicate, communicate, communicate.
Yes, councillor Currock.
Just around business disruption, and I'm not talking solely about the construction phase, but on system implemented, um, the right turns across two lanes of traffic, do you envisage that being a problem?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the short answer is no. Uh, where we have, we'll have to control the right turns at certain locations. Um, but um, as is with any kind of operational response, we will prioritize certain movements at different times of the day. Uh, and then so those right turns might be harder to make during a peak period and on so on and so forth. But that's, that's a common practice, um particularly on um traffic signals and, and whatnot too. So um there are those operational uh levers we can pull uh with, with regard to that. But uh particularly for residents in the area who might be turning into driveways and then things like that, um, the travel behaviour will need to um, they be adjust, will need to adjust. It's, it will no longer be the corridor it is now. Uh, it will be busier. Uh, and it will, we require a different approach from our residents around how to use it. And I think that's one of the things we can do as part of that construction is, is to really work with our neighbours and not teach, but certainly outline that these sorts of behaviours could need to change.
If I'm, if I may add, that, that, that was one of the specific design challenges to um the, the, the right-hand turns as you, as you make reference to. And um we have also looked at using the, the third lane as the right turning lane off peak hour. So um there, there are some specific design challenges at peak times, but there's actually also an opportunity to make it better and easier and safer off that peak. But um it, it is a, quite a specific design challenge that we're going through.
If we uh looked at the um effects on Fraser Street and are we just gonna move a bottleneck from one place to another?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the short answer is yes. Um, all of our projects, particularly these large ones, um try and create a, a level of system balance um and still do the job it's supposed to do. So the short answer is yes, but there are wider network effects that do manifest from being able to move through this corridor more easily. Uh, you get to somewhere else more quickly and potentially to another queue, depending on where you're going.
Okay, thank you. We've got any further questions? Um, in that case, I thank uh the staff. Um, and now we've finished with questions of staff, uh, I will call for a mover and seconder of recommendations. And I'll be delighted to move it in the fact that we're actually getting on and, and getting some plans into hopefully a delivery phase um as soon as possible. Um, and second, uh councillor Schola. Uh, as uh, as the mover, um, I would just, just like to uh reiterate. Um, you know, I think one of the, the keys for me uh in, in running here is delivering for our people. Um, and you know, one of the, the key things is, are some of these bottlenecks around the city. Um, and uh Tarot Road is, is obviously uh one of those. I think um in, in saying that, uh, you know, it would be ideal for a four lane. Uh, but I think the cost uh and the time that it would take uh to get that across the line is just gonna kick the cam down the road a little bit more, um, which I think we're, we're better to get on and, and do uh this now. Um, obviously, uh, we're, we're only at this stage putting the case to NZTA. But um, you know, we, we need to start moving and, and getting some of these things done. So that's very much uh, you know, where I, I sit on it and um, and I look forward to hopefully some positive outcomes over the the next coming months. So uh councillor Schola, would you like to talk or reserve your? Okay, reserve. Uh, any other debate? Councillor Morris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanna echo your um uh view on the achievability of four lanes in, in the short to medium term. It's just very hard from a consenting perspective and it's a press, pressing issue for the city now. Uh, and so it's gonna be great to get on with it. I do want to acknowledge a member of the community, Mark Wasang, who presented uh the tidal flow proposal to council some seven or eight years ago. Uh, so I think it's appropriate to mention him at this juncture, but uh I fully support it. It's gonna be great to deliver this project uh in the next few years.
Uh, councillor Currock.
Yes, and it certainly gives me some joy because a lot of water has passed under that bridge since we first started talking about it.
The other debate or, yeah, councillor Taylor.
Uh, so, sorry, just leading on from my previous comment about disruption. Um, I hope this time round we get it right for the businesses that are gonna be affected on fifteenth avenue especially, so. Um, yeah.
Uh, councillor Crowther.
Um, yes, I recall the uh, the tidal flow option being presented and um I, I recall Tauranga City Council staff being adamant that it was not possible. So it shows things can change. Um, and I, I guess for me it comes down to that, as you heard, sixty percent of the investment will be feature-proofing for, uh, you know, four-laning of, of fifteenth. The rest will not preclude any uh four-laning. I know there are large calls out in the community to do more, but I think there are bigger calls to do something now. I strongly support that. My concerns are the construction phase, as Mike alluded to, there are no good solutions. And I've seen what was presented to the commissioners and I, I think, you know, none of that's gonna be satisfactory to our communities. Um, maybe a theory, I don't know. Um, but you know, they, they, um, you know, the, the big thing we have to do is to be very clear in our communication around that and to come up with the very best plan we can. Um, I am concerned a little bit about the NZTA um sort of issue of, of the uh this project versus Cameron Road stage two. Bearing in mind the limited funding. Um, and I know in the regional land transport plan, Cameron Road stage two was pushed very heavily. This was not. And I, I sort of have concerns around how that might play out. I hope this just gets through irrespective of that. I also have concerns around the turns. And I note in a recent project with Tauranga City Council, there was strong community criticism around the advice the council got around the turns. And um I've been part of sort of discussions with council staff in the last year around that. I would strongly recommend going to New Zealand's leading expert on the turns down there at uh Tarot Road, who's Dr Ian McLean. And I think you will go, you know, go a long way towards getting a good solution there if you can use that expert advice. He's co-authored a paper on those, on those turns and uh ornithological New Zealand or some, some, some magazine like that.
You can, uh, thank you councillor Crowther. I thought you were talking about the right turns for a minute, but the, the birds' turns. Yeah, thank you. Um, any, any other debate or discussion? Okay, well, thank you. Um, oh, sorry. Yes, councillor Schola.
So reserve. Um, I just wanna reiterate the need for really good communications. And um I like the conversation about having an audience, which is the residents and, and if there are businesses there. Um, when, you know, in terms of right turns into your driveway at night, we just get used to that and, and it will cause issues across two lanes. So it's really important that um communication is done really well and done early and done continually um throughout that. But otherwise, it's um great, this is progressing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Schola. And uh I, I think uh the, the council has covered uh all my thoughts. So um I won't, I won't go any further. Um, but I will put to council uh that the council receives the report Fifteenth Avenue to Welcome Bay Single Stage Business Case, endorses the single-stage business case submission to NZTA Board for Approval. Notes that the co-funding request is for stage one only. Notes that endorsement of a single-stage business case does not commit in uh Tauranga City Council or NZTA to implement uh, uh, to implementation or funding. A further decision-making gate will occur to outline affordability and request. Notes that the stage one project costs are within current twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty-four long-term plan. Uh, notes that a single-stage business case needs to be submitted to NZTA no later than twenty-sixth of August twenty twenty-four to ensure a NZTA board decision by October twenty twenty-four. Any submission after this date will push the NZTA board decision to later twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. Um, I would like all those in favour, aye? All those against, no? That motion is carried. Uh, we now move on to the next uh order of business, uh, which is the activation of Cameron Road bus lanes. Uh, Nick Johansson, General Manager, Infrastructure and Sean uh Good, City Centre Infrastructure Lead will be speaking to the report.
I'm sick of my voice soon. Um, this um, this implementation and activation of the Cameron Road bus lanes um was um always part of the project design. And uh the implementation was delayed as it was felt that the disruption to businesses was such during the construction phase that as we were gonna turn it on um at the start of the year, um the businesses should be given a reprieve. So that's, that's why the decision to delay it was made in the first place. Um, and we now think it's, it's, it's timely to uh click it into gear and also from the feedback that we hear um uh, uh, about the lanes sitting there unused basically and the signage um on an angle. So when's that gonna happen? Um, uh, it's, it's also based on a CIP funding, as you will have read in the, in the paper, that the, 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 the bus lanes um are contracted part of the, the, the design um as per an MOU between us, Crown Infrastructure Partner and the Regional Council. Um, so if you're okay to take the paper as read, other than that, um be able to take questions.
Had too much talking, sorry. Um, thank you. Um, we uh will take any questions. Um, I just have one around the uh, you know, in the uh memorandum of understanding, there's the, the trigger points. And I'm just interested uh if we have hit uh any of those trigger points at this stage.
So we don't believe that we've hit any of those trigger points at this stage?
Okay, uh, I, I guess the follow-up to that is have we got any data on how much quicker uh we're gonna make a bus journey by implementing this?
So we don't have uh any great data on that based on, at the moment, the only real delay for buses is pulling out of the bus stop into the active lane and a little bit at the intersections. We do monitor travel time between key points along Cameron Road and We do monitor travel time between key points along Cameron Road and typically a general vehicle is about uh ten to twenty seconds quicker through each point, being that there's three points. It ends up being about a minute quicker for a general vehicle than a bus to travel down that corridor.
Okay, thank you. Um and will the obviously that's the buses are pulling out into traffic. So will that help with any traffic flow?
Yes, yes, it will assist that congestion that can occur in that point.
Uh thank you. I guess um yeah, probably where I'm coming from is are we are we solving a problem that we don't have? And uh you know, are we just gonna piss people off um for for the sake of uh of having the the bus lanes? And and maybe we we would be better to uh to wait until um until we actually hit one of those triggers or we actually have a problem. But um that's uh that's my thoughts. Uh is there any any other uh questions? Uh councillors uh Schuler?
Just a um quick question. The difference, obviously, the one minute um for general vehicle over a bus, but overall, how much quicker is it now heading into town than what it was before the Stage One was done?
Um I haven't been able to pull together numbers, being that construction happened over a fairly extended period of time and with the COVID and the like in the way, there's not a great relation.
Um and have we done any consultation with business owners that this is potentially going to? Uh I guess, you know, taking parking out. Um and uh what are their thoughts?
So there was a plink of engagement that happened during construction. We haven't gone out to the businesses again at this point. We are fully aware that they are fairly yeah, they they do want their car parking spaces out front as uh as I'm sure you can all imagine. The idea was that we would, after receiving your own, yeah, or council decision on the direction, we would undertake further engagement based on that direction.
Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, can you um first question is, can you clarify why the afternoon peak is still four to six? Because as a user of that sort of road, it doesn't seem like that's the peak. The peak seems to be more like, you know, if I guessed, that it'd be three thirty to five thirty. But but I'm just wondering whether there's any data to back up when the peak is there.
So uh four till six uh has been it's easier also to do it uh hour by hour. At at a general rule, being that it's a much less confusing sign. So it could go three till five, three thirty till five thirty. Does become quite a difficult sign to understand is the typical reason.
Is is there any evidence to back back up the four to six though?
So that ensures the capture of that late four to early five period while allowing people the time to and a little bit of leeway at the start and end of the period.
Can can I just add to that too? When when we made this consideration, it was because this is title only. So um the car parks aren't being lost for the duration. And so they're being lost for that part of the day. So we we have tried to push it as far out in the afternoon as possible to allow access to the businesses for as long as possible. Um so there there there's an element of compromise. If we wanted to foolproof the implementation, we could make it three to five. Um this also four to six gives us an opportunity to monitor the monitor the effectiveness of it. And if we find that um that it's not um meeting its intended design purpose, um I guess that monitoring would would have us back here and suggest something different in the future.
Through the chairs. The second question is, um do you know how many of the thirty percent of the retail adjacent car parks, which are kind of the most critical ones, um do you know how many are on each side of the road?
I'd have to uh go to the report very quickly. I do remember doing that mass and believe it was so. Sorry, just to clarify that, it was uh of the hundred percent northbound or hundred northbound lanes, about thirty percent of them are retail and of the sixty one southbound spaces, that was also about thirty percent. It was fairly.
Okay, thank you. And the third question was, um can the bus queue jumps? Like, I guess I'm trying to understand what the downside is and then being implemented at all times as opposed to just at the peak time, because my understanding is that it could disadvantage cars for a very short period of time. But is probably going to have less of an impact in terms of light phasing um and timing of vehicles, et cetera, at the off-peak time. So if if we were to choose the bus queue jumps option, would why could that not be implemented at all times?
So uh there would be some car parking impacts uh associated with associated with that. It could be implemented uh at all times. However, that car park versus movement.
Uh thank you. Have we got any other questions around the table? Yeah, councillor Taylor?
Um it's probably been said before, but man, kicking people when they're down. Um these businesses have had it for nearly three years now. They've been putting up with this. We've got some some kind of normality for six months and now we're gonna go at it again. I just cannot see how that's fair and equitable, given that it doesn't appear to be too many issues and I don't know that you've like if someone said that was causing more um traffic issues, well, I can understand it, but at the moment it looks pretty good, so. Uh really want you to push it and look again at whether it um can be left to the status quo. Perhaps it can get hooked into Cameron Road Stage Two when that gets operational, that we can then look at the entirety of Cameron Road and whether it's suitable then. And I know you've got stones and all that thing to look at, but um I think we owe these people something uh as far as looking at their businesses go.
I just uh further to that, is there is there any um disadvantage by not doing this?
It's uh really around the confusion of the public in the way that it's currently marked and signed. We do receive fairly regularly feedback about why is that sign turned around? Why is it covered? So that is the uh feedback that we've been receiving. It's also around the whole, how long do you push it until you actually remove those set that signage and that line marking? So that would be a decision for yourselves to make of if you wanted an option to remove the signs and line marking.
Yeah, just to add to the 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 point to that also is that it does make uh the the journey time a little bit quicker for everyone marginally. But um uh ju- ju- just to reiterate that point, that there are advantages to the travelling public, both from a from a public transport pers- perspective and and if you're in a car. And then and then as the second consideration, I think also um the the long term, uh and and this was discussed also under the under the under the previous governance. But this is the uh the major spine through the Tapapa Peninsula uh for which we are looking at significant intensification um under the plan change, et cetera. So um at at some point in time, we need to signal that the adjacent use of the Cameron Road corridor needs to 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 shift along with the times of that intensification. Um and you can then argue whether it's easier to make that implementation while the problem isn't as big as it will be one day when we would possibly come around to do it. If we if we decide to do it at a at a different point in time.
Uh thank you. Uh councillor Roseboam?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First one, do we have to do both at the same time, north and the south?
There's no reason why uh we couldn't do uh yeah, maybe southbound uh now and northbound later?
It was just my own personal experience and I've since I've been given this new job, I travel that road nearly every day now. Coming in in the mornings between seven and nine, the traffic flows very well. There'll be very little to be gained by prioritizing the bus lane. Whereas in the afternoon, four to six, Cameron Road is almost parked from the end of the bus lane. I think would get a lot of information if you just implemented the southbound lane. Focused on that to see how that improves the entire Cameron Road, I think it'd be highly beneficial. Because we'd see, we'd get fairly quick evidence of the impact of the bus lane. Whereas doing the northbound one in the morning would be very little change to general traffic flow.
All right, so yes, that uh there's no uh reason why that couldn't be included as.
Yeah.
As an option.
As an option.
Yeah, just do one. So yeah, it goes. That way the northbound traffic in the morning just stays as is. Yep.
Uh any further uh councillor Scholar?
Um thank you, Mayor Mahay. I think I'm, I guess, concerned that we haven't yet consulted and um as councillor Taylor said, we have acknowledged that we didn't treat the businesses along Cameron Road well for three years. Uh and I think I would have preferred this to have had some feedback from them. I'm not convinced saving a minute um is worth re-upsetting them. Um we actually do want Cameron Road is not just about transport, it is about businesses as well. Because if people are gonna live there, we do want their business. So I think we have to recognize that there's more than just a transport route that we're impacting. And we need to say, how do we keep those businesses there? Because we do want them there. Uh and my um I quite like the suggestion that we only do one of them. But my thought was if we tied this in with Cameron Road Stage Two, um that probably I would rather have better data on um the return on investment for doing this now um in terms of the people we're gonna impact versus the people we're gonna add value to.
Have we got any other questions for staff as well? Um all right, thank you. Um thank you to uh the staff for answering our questions. Um I will now uh we um we can go to see if we have a uh a mover of the recommendations um or if we have a mover of of a alternative motion.
So it'll be forced to do it. Um I would move an alternative um recommendation. Option B. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we'll just uh we'll just get that together.
Fifty-two. I I'll second that motion.
All right, so option B is um bus queue jumps at traffic signals. Uh provides um bus jumps at traffic signals to allow buses through queued traffic near intersections. Provide for the current bus delay constraints at intersections in a way that allows for parking with uh where these delays are less pronounced. Um and sorry, and this this can be changed to the bus lanes in future. Uh and the the cons is the delays associated with buses pulling out into traffic would predominantly remain making bus journeys less attractive. Um Bay of Plenty Regional Council expects bus lanes along Cameron Road. A commitment to bus lanes when required could mitigate this. Additional markings, signage will be required at T C C cost. This is expected in total approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Car parking at times impacts traffic flow, parallel parking. Um so um sorry, uh councillor Taylor, would you like to speak to them?
Sorry, it wasn't really quite. I probably got a little bit ahead myself there. Um I think this is a the better of the two options, obviously. Um I'd actually like to see it stay as it is for the moment, but so I'm probably talking against my own notion to agree, but. Yeah, I don't obviously like spending two hundred grand that we don't need to for a starter. Um and I don't know that we've got full facts on what the impacts are gonna be, both the traffic that the the guys talked about and on we're gonna lose some car parks here, which um I don't really know. And we might lose half the car parks anyway.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Morris?
Uh thank you councillor for moving the motion. Um I I do support it. Uh I think that, yes, we 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 do recognize that there will be intensification along the corridor in years to come. Uh but the reality is that that will take years, if not decades, to achieve. Uh and uh in years slash decades, it may be uh appropriate to consider removal of car parks for bus lanes, particularly if, as a big if, Stage Two of Cameron Road is progressed at some time in the future. Uh so in lieu of that, it does strike me as a little bit of a solution that's in search of a problem, uh which does in fact create a problem for business owners out there. And one of the benefits of being out of this place uh over the last three and a half years is the conversations I've had uh with residents and business owners uh when doing shopping and uh exercising my uh right of custom with um businesses along Cameron Road. And the pain is real. Uh the fact that some of them are no longer standing is real. Uh and I think it is important, as always, to reflect on uh decisions which may appear simple around this table, but do affect families and their livelihoods. Public that frequent those businesses.
Uh thank you. Um I will talk. Uh I don't support this uh because I don't feel like we're solving a real problem at the moment. And I don't wish to spend the money. Uh what I would support um is, I I agree absolutely. Bus lanes are a very effective way of of managing traffic. Um but we need a a problem to solve. Um and when that time comes, uh that we would go out and consult um as to what the best solution was. Uh and that that may be in twelve months' time, I'm I'm not sure. But I I feel like right now um we don't have a an issue. Although I do uh take councillor Roseboam's um uh feedback on board. Um and that may be a a solution uh that we we did it in the afternoon, for example. Uh I guess I see potentially for some of those businesses like cafes uh along that route, it would actually be less disruptive as most of those would not be open uh at that time of night. Um however, I I think again, before we did anything, I would I would like to see uh us go and probably talk to every single. I'd like to see us go and talk to every single business owner to to discuss and and uh and hear from them um because of of what we we have done. Uh so I'd very much support a uh a report back uh in the future, um after we have done that work. Um and as I say, I I wouldn't I wouldn't uh disagree with with trying um, you know, it in in one direction. Um but again, I'd I'd like that consulted before uh we we went ahead with it. Um but you know, I'm I'm about solving problems and uh and not trying to find solutions to problems we don't have. So um that's that's where I s- stand on it. Anyone else uh wish to speak to it? Uh councillor Crowther?
Um yeah, I think this sort of sums up nicely my view of what the commissioners did when they were here, which was that they consulted with certain people and not with others. They pushed ahead on a project against, in this case, the wishes of fifteen community organizations against the design favored by Bay Plenty Regional Council, the design favored by NZT. against the design favoured by Bay Plenty Regional Council, the design favoured by NZTA and against criticism from leading transport safety experts. So we've sort of got this bit of a mess in the first place. The consultation with businesses we know was very poor along there in the sense of not the early engagement, but the the crucial engagement around the the final design. I was a key stakeholder at one point, I became a stakeholder, I think, wasn't quite so key. And having observed that, it all play out, I think we're in danger of going down a similar track where we flip-flop around and we're going to be putting, by the sounds of it, too much emphasis on the businesses, noting that the majority of people using that road are using it as a means of transport to get up and down that road or across in some cases. And I think we have to factor in all that stuff, it's incredibly complex. There was a lot of pre-engagement in that project, there was a lot of stakeholder engagement that threw up a lot of the issues that have been talked about here. There is a, I understand a binding agreement with the Crown, who we've talked about earlier today that we want to stay on board with and with Bay Plenty Regional Council, a key partner. So there are a number of factors there. And as a bus user, I knew going into this project, the business case said it would make my trip slower. So if it's correct that it's one minute slower than cars, what that means is that cars have indeed, as the business case predicted, got a slower journey time. So all those, you know, there's a bunch of these things to consider, but the core one is what are the benefits versus the costs? And I think that's what we're not seeing a clear idea of what benefits are. I would much prefer to let it lay on the table or to come up with another process to actually get the data we need. Regional council must have reasonable data because I have spoken to the transport team there about this. And they are confident that if we don't do something like this today, we're going to be in for big troubles in a couple of years. So we'd be committing rate power funding to either remove the the markings or to leave them as they are now, which is causing a lot of confusion. According to the Automobile Association have had feedback around that, others have had feedback. So I think there's a lot of lot of moving bits. I I guess I would note, perhaps in contrast to councillor Roseboam, that there is there's also an advantage of doing it on the north northern side rather than the southern or southbound. Because there are only, by my assessment of it, there are probably only three businesses that are seriously impacted on Cameron Road itself on the northbound at that time of the day that are open. I've looked on, if you can trust Google's information in terms of their their business hours. So we're talking about three businesses versus what potentially I'm told over a period of time that this is almost certain to be a significant impact on travel time for buses along that northbound trip in the morning. I use it in the morning peak, I've used it in the afternoon peak. I understand it's different from Eleventh Avenue where I don't normally go beyond towards Seventeenth. So that's a separate issue. But in terms of from Elizabeth through to Eleventh, I've never experienced a delay on the southbound. And there are businesses there, although there are fewer businesses on that side of the road who are retail. The ones that are there, in the case of, I can think of a couple of restaurants, there are others that are opening around four thirty P M, they will be right in this four to six band. So I, you know, that's also problematic. And I'd much rather be much more confident that whatever we choose, we're sort of wandering around a few possibilities. But we don't seem to have a solid database to choose the right option. And we, I think, need to be very clear that what we're going to do is not going to adversely impact the bus network. Because after all, we spent, what is it, 110 million on this primarily to deliver benefits to bus users and we certainly haven't got them.
Thank you councillor Crowther. Any other comments? So where do we go? Yeah, who were the? So councillor Taylor, have you got? No. Okay, thank you. So I guess that sort of sums it up and we've we've heard a range of of recommendations. And, yeah, I I think there's there's possibly more discussion. I think I think we probably agree with you in a lot of ways, Glen, around that it's not it's not a we're doing, going away from these altogether. It's just a matter of when. But I think we also agree around that consultation. And if that's the case, that there's only three businesses affected, that should come back in the consultation that actually, you know, it's it's not it's not a it's not a problem. If a if a business owner says to us, it's not a problem if you do this, I think that's a very easy, you know, solution for us when we're taking that into account. But, you know, we also need that feedback, I guess, from bus patrons as well. Because I absolutely agree if if you make it easier, and I've experienced that from the North Shore, that people will will use public transport. So we are we are tossing that up. So we'll put this motion to council that approves option B, bus queue jumps at traffic signals, which allows buses through queued traffic near intersections and which can be changed to bus lanes in the future. I ask all those in favour, aye? So we'll have a show of hands, so ayes. Okay, and those against, no?
Yes.
Are you? Yeah, sorry, yeah, Glen, sorry. Okay, so that motion is lost. I ask now if there is any alternative motions to to put forward?
Yeah, there's a desire to let it lay on the table subsequent to further consultation. Yeah? I'll move it and data, yeah. So let the matters, we'll let this report lay on the table, subject to further consultation and data.
We'll just just adjourn while we get that up. Are we happy? Are we happy if we got a timeframe on it as the end by the end of the year? Yeah, is that is that enough time or do you want to revisit first meeting of the new year? First meeting of the new year? Okay. And I think we can just add in a that receives the report.
Well, yes, it's through the chair. I I guess what would be helpful, I think, is to know which parking spaces will be lost in the queue jumps option. Because I think if I look at things like the, I mean, just to give an example, between Eleventh and Twelfth Ave on the southbound direction, there are a number of businesses open at that time of the day which will be lost in the bus lane. Will they still be lost in the queue jump option in terms of the packing that they have outside their their shops?
Southbound though, that would be only afternoon. Okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll we'll leave that to the, yeah, to the information. But we can communicate with staff if there's specific things we want. So we've had that moved by councillor Taylor and seconded by councillor Kuruk. Councillor Taylor, would you like to speak to any of that?
I think that's a good result at the moment. I'll just take up one of Jen's points that I think it needs to be a, every individual business needs to be consulted, whether that's a mail out letter to them, so we get specific feedback from each one.
Any any other discussion? And I think are we are we sort of consulting around the full the full bus lanes? We're kind of happy with with that option? Yeah. Yeah, okay, all options, yeah. Any other discussion?
Yes, perhaps to to, yeah, liaise with us in terms of the data so that when it's presented to the meeting, we're clear we have all the data that we need. Because there's probably multiple layers of that and just to get get the relevant information for both those options. Mike Michael knows very well about what what we need. Yeah, including, yeah, as councillor. And including from Bay Plenty Regional Council.
Right, councillor Shula?
Just just for clarity, so that there is status quo as it is, is likely using it. And then there's the option of the queue jump or the full bus lanes.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Morris?
Yeah, briefly to it, important that that consultation includes bus users.
Yep. Okay, in that case, if we've got no further discussion, we want to go back councillor Taylor, you're you're happy, all right? I therefore move a motion that council receives the report, activation of Cameron Road bus lanes, leaves the report to lay on the table, subject to further data and consultations with a report to come back to council's first meeting in twenty twenty five. All those in favour, aye? Those against, no? That motion is carried. I would, we've we've just going to change the order of business slightly. And we're going to move to publicly excluded for one matter. And then we will we'll come back. We'll go a bit of a flip-flop. So. Yeah, sorry. All right, we're we're just going to go into publicly excluded for the Western Bay of Plenty sub-regional city deal. Nigel Tuck is going to talk to it and has to has to go. So the the reason for passing this resolution is section seven two one. The withholding of the information is necessary to enable council to carry on without prejudice or disadvantaged negotiations, including commercial and industrial negotiations. Section forty-eight one A, the public conclude conduct of irrelevant parts of a proceeding to the meeting would likely result in the disclosure of information for which good reason for withholding would exist under section six and seven. So we'll just stop recording. Have I got a mover to go into publicly excluded? Councillor Shula, thank you, and a seconder councillor Shula, all those in favour, aye? Those against, no?